Okay, folks, it is four o'clock, so we're gonna need to get started. I will say that I cannot promise that my dogs are gonna cooperate as well as Mr. Frisch's did, or my children, so I will do my best to keep it as quiet as humanly possible in my house. We are gonna start with a quick check back in again, so I'll do a roll call just to make sure that everybody was able to give back. Ms. Omish?
Here.
Ms. Tolan?
I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I'm here.
Ms. Keys-Gamaran? Mr. Frisch?
Present.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Marin?
Here.
Ms. Sizemore-Hizer?
Kinda here.
Dr. Anderson?
I'm present, thank you.
Ms. Bukarski?
I'm here.
Ms. Darren Echofax?
Here.
All right, that looks like everyone who has signed on. I would love us to go ahead and get started, so Dr. Braybrand, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen, and thank you, members of the Fairfax County School Board. I am glad to present to you this evening TJ admissions merit lottery proposal. I wanna start, if I can get that presentation to come up on the screen for everybody. Again, I'd like to start with the next slide and the agenda, what we're going to do this afternoon. We're gonna share some background about TJ and TJ admissions, look at the current application process, previous changes that this board and other boards have made over the years around TJ admissions, and look at the results of that work. Based on that, I'm also going to share with you, after review by our team, a merit lottery proposal, and give you an overview of that proposal, and model for you what that proposal would look like and would have looked like in past times in Fairfax County Public Schools for TJ. I'd like to go to the next slide. One of the things we just talked about earlier this afternoon is leading with equity at the center of all that we say and do. And that is such an important discussion that this board and the prior school board has had, as we've talked about One Fairfax and having equity at the focus and center of what we do. And we need to recognize today that TJ should reflect the diversity of Fairfax County Public Schools, the community, and of Northern Virginia, as other school divisions also have students that attend Thomas Jefferson. And the reality today, if we are honestly leading with equity at the center, is that the talent at Thomas Jefferson currently does not reflect the talent that exists in FCPS. We recognize a comprehensive approach is needed to enhance diversity and inclusion at Thomas Jefferson. This goal aligns with the One Fairfax Initiative, and we are proposing a three-pronged approach. Today, you'll be hearing about admissions and the merit lottery recommendation. The second piece is really about enhancing the pipeline, and this board and the prior board already were looking at this issue. We heard from our AAP study consultants back in the spring, and we will be bringing you next month our recommendations from those consultants around how we can enhance the pipeline to TJ, and really to enhance the pipeline for advanced academics across all of our schools. We will also talk about a third prong, which is enhanced wraparound support for our Thomas Jefferson students. I'd like to just center the board in the next slide, if we can, of what FCPS student population looks like if we go back to fall of 2019. You can see a little bit over 37% Asian, a little bit over 19, excuse me, 37% white, my apologies, a little bit over 19% Asian, almost 10% African American, and you can see, again, two or more races, and our Hispanic population being almost 27%. You can see below the pie chart that our economically disadvantaged population as of last year, and we know that number has been trending slightly upward, is slightly over 29%, and English language learners stands at 24 or 27.4% of our population. We have a large number of English language learners as part of the overall Commonwealth of Virginia, second language learners. I'm now gonna turn it over to our Chief Operating Officer Marty Smith to give you some historical perspective on TJ admissions. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, and if we could just stay on this slide for a moment. This slide here will frame our discussion for the remainder of the day. We'll be looking at our diversity at TJ, and as Dr. Braybrand said earlier, the diversity at TJ doesn't currently reflect the diversity of Northern Virginia, and the talent at TJ does not reflect the talent in Fairfax County Public Schools. If we go to the next slide, I want to share some data here with you, and on the left you'll see a 15-year lookback of our application pool, and on the right you'll see a 15-year lookback of the same student offers for TJ High School for Science and Technology. It's important to note that some of the gaps that we've seen over time for some of our groups of students have only gotten wider with regard to the applicant pool, and we see that those gaps have gotten even wider for those students who were offered admissions to the school. Again, the framing of our discussion today is to talk about the steps that we've taken along the way to address these gaps, and for the rest of our presentation, we'll be taking snapshots from crucial years in this process, so that you can see the changes that we've put in place. Before I do go on, I do want to thank both Ms. Cohen and Mr. Frisch for their thoughtful input as part of the meeting manager's meeting, so that we could help frame this story in a different way. So if we go to the next slide, before I have Mr. Schuder, who is our Director for TJ Admissions, speak, I do wanna point out, as Dr. Braybrand said, that, you know, past boards have been focused on diversity at TJ for quite some time. The community has been concerned about diversity at TJ for quite some time, and so I want Mr. Schuder to take this opportunity to go through this slide, to talk about the changes that we've made to the process, but it is important to note that with all of these changes that we've made to the process, but we haven't realized the outcomes that we were looking for, which is why we're bringing this proposal to you today. So with that, Mr. Schuder, would you please describe the changes for the class of 2016 through the class of 2022?
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and good evening, board. Just to kinda start and work your way down, so that way you can, you know, as you're reading through this, back in 2011 to 2011-2012 school year, which would have resulted in the class of 2016, at that point in time, a position was created and added to the TJ Admissions Office, and that position was the outreach specialist. At that point in time, it was a new position, and we were building that position up to basically encourage and bring about more diversity from that, reaching out to the community, and specifically to our underrepresented students. As we move forward in 2013-14, one of the things that occurred at that point in time was the previous board, or the board at the time, had some, made some changes to the policy, and holistically was the way in which we went. We moved away from a component-based scoring of the applicants to a holistic review. At the same time, we also moved the student information sheet from a part of the application to a proctored environment. And so what we're seeing is, is we're seeing a periodic or a large shift with the holistic review, and then minor changes to the process. The following year, we made changes to, at that time, what was known as the sliding scale. The sliding scale was a combination of test scores along with GPA, and ultimately, it was to increase the poll of students who were in our semifinalist poll. In 2015, with the class of 2020, we altered our problem-solving essay. Prior to that, it was more of a, more of an essay or a combination of essays that students would write that were more along the persuasive writing style, and we identified that really what we were looking for was students' abilities to solve problems and how they went about that, so we implemented the problem-solving essay. Unfortunately, in the year 2016-17, due to budget cuts, we were forced to reduce our outreach specialist position to a .5 position. That dramatically changed and altered how we did some of our work at that point in time, still to this day. In 2017, and just prior to that, we were informed by our test producer at the time, and that they were no longer going to be producing the TJ admissions test. So in 2017, we worked with a large group of interested group, you know, people that had a commitment to TJ and doing some things that were the right way, or what, you know, and as we went through that process, we adopted new testing. That testing resulted in the QUATQ and the ACT-SPIRE reading in science. You know, as it says down at the bottom, the changes that we've made ultimately have not significantly impacted, you know, our students within our admitted class. We wanna go ahead and go to the next slide. Currently, as our admissions process stands today, where we currently stand is, all students apply in early in the fall, there's an application fee of $100 for students, we do have a waiver of those fees for students that are economically disadvantaged. The application minimums for those students is that they have a core GPA of a 3.0, they're enrolled in Algebra I as a minimum, and they have to be enrolled in eighth grade and be a resident in either Fairfax County or one of our participating jurisdictions. As they move through the process, they take testing in the late fall, early winter, and we use percentile ranks from each of the assessments that we currently use, the QUATQ, the ACT-SPIRE reading in science, and they have to maintain that GPA of a core GPA of a 3.0. For those students that meet those minimum requirements at the semifinalist stage, they move on to the final stage of that, and they ask two teachers to submit recommendations, they return and submit responses to student information sheet. That problem-solving essay that I mentioned just a short while ago, we continue to use the percentile ranks from the previous assessments, and we include the GPA, and we actually have a math science GPA as well. Ultimately, what we're looking to do is we're offering approximately 480 to 500 students on an annual basis. At this point in time, I'm gonna go ahead and move it, return this back to Dr. Brayband, and allow him to move on to the next slide.
Thank you, Jeremy. I want the board and our community to see the impact of data and data in context as we look back over TJ classes from almost 20 years ago, and I wanna be clear, admissions testing has been a barrier for historically underrepresented students to move to the semifinalist stage. We have applicants that have talent, that have merit, and those applicants are drained out in the semifinalist stage through the use of an admissions test. It has had a disproportionate impact on the diversity of the existing application pool. Let's look at 2015 right here, you can see the, on the left, class of 2015, the applicants, those kids that have the credentials to apply for TJ, and then the semifinalists, which is that pool after the test is administered. You can see the number of black, Hispanic, and black and Hispanic shrinking from applicants to semifinalists. We also have, not on the pie chart, but just below it, the percentage of English language learners and economically disadvantaged. Look at the dramatic impact that the test, which is having those highest scores on the test, has on these kids of talent and merit that are English language learners and economically disadvantaged kids. You can see the number goes from 8% for English language learners down to just over, a little over 4%, almost a drop in half, and look at the impact for economically disadvantaged kids. They represent a little over 7% of the pool back in 2015, but then when that test is administered, just a little over 1%. If we can go to the next slide, 2019, you can see the same compression happens for our African American students, for our Hispanic students, for our English language learners, and for our economically disadvantaged. Same kind of shrinking or draining out of talent and merit in the first pool that does not exist in the second pool when the test is administered. Again, you can see those numbers go down from our Hispanic, from 7% to 4%, from African American, from 7% to 2%, from English language learners, from over 2.6% to just 1%, and economically disadvantaged, again, taking a tremendous drop from 6% to just over 2%. And then, again, just recently, let's go to the next slide. The class of 2024, the same kind of compression, and the numbers only getting worse. A shrinkage for our African American from 6% to 1%, a shrinkage of English language learners after the administration of the test to less than 1%, 0.6%, and are economically disadvantaged in the pool at over 7%, down to just a bit over 1% for the semifinalist. Admissions testing has been a barrier for historically underrepresented students. It has drained merit from the pool, it has drained talent from the pool. I'd like to share with you now our merit lottery proposal. This is about, if we can go to the next slide, expanding our talent search. The talent is right before our eyes, it's right in the pool, and this merit lottery will expand the talent and elevate that talent, so that we have the sort of equity of access and opportunity that we say we do in our strategic plan here in Fairfax County Public Schools. If we can go to the process overview, you've already heard Jeremy outline on the left our current process. Our proposed process would keep many of the requirements to apply, and in fact, we would increase the core class GPA from a 3.0 to a 3.5. We would still maintain the Algebra I requirement and residency requirements, and we would, of course, in the proposed process, revise our student information sheet to include a questionnaire and essay to get at students' interest and passion for going to a school with science and technology as its focus. We would then apply our merit lottery. What a proposed process would remove is the application fee, which is $100, the assessment percentile ranking, where we make test scores, that important piece in the semifinalist round, removing teacher recommendations, which we've already heard from our AAP study about the potential bias in those recommendations, and the problem-solving essay. If we go to the next slide, in the merit lottery process, students would be placed into lottery pathways after a holistic review. Students would then be randomly selected within their pathways. Offer letters would be sent, and students would have a designated timeframe to accept or reject their offer. And it would be our goal to have rolling admissions established to keep a class of 500, which is slightly up from the number of students we have in our current freshman class at Thomas Jefferson. We can go to the next slide. Pathways have been designated to ensure equitable access for students across all regions in FCPS and in participating jurisdictions. That includes Arlington County, Fairfax County, Falls Church City, Loudoun County, and Prince William County. Qualified students will be selected by a merit lottery within each of the pathways. Let me share that in a little bit more detail on the next slide. You can see a breakdown of the pathways here on this slide. The numbers represented are based on the allowed ratio student cap for the 1920 freshman application. So in Fairfax, we currently have 350 seats for Thomas Jefferson. The pathways would be divided by 70 per region. Loudoun, which sends a significant number of students, would be almost equal to one of our regions in the number of students that they send, and it would be at about 62 seats. Arlington at 18 seats, Falls Church at two seats, and Prince William, again, very similar to Loudoun, at 68 seats. Private school applicants will be assigned a pathway based on their residency. I also want to show that pathway composition in more detail for Fairfax County Public Schools. Applicants would be placed in region based on the student's base school. So for Region 1, you can see those base schools, Region 2, Region 3, Region 4, and Region 5. And as I share, each region would have, through the merit lottery process, 70 spots for kids who have the merit and the talent to attend Thomas Jefferson. We recognize that, we recognize the impact of creating this opportunity. This approach creates geographic diversity across Fairfax and participating jurisdictions instead of a county-level approach in Fairfax. The school approach was not used due to consistency with our participating jurisdictions, and our process does drive the process for our participating jurisdictions. I'd like Jeremy now to explain a little bit more in detail the rolling admissions process that we would use with this merit lottery proposal. Jeremy?
Thank you, Dr. Brayband. In terms of the rolling admissions process, what will happen and what would occur is, we'll maintain a list of all the students per pathway, whether that's the five pathways in Fairfax County, and each pathway for the individual counties in the city of Falls Church, that would maintain that list of students in the order in which they're drawn. So as an opening occurs within each of those particular pathways, we would select or we would fill that student based upon the next available or the next qualified student on the list within the pathway. In the event, a pathway that is a non-FCPS pathway should exhaust all of this list of students, the next eligible candidate would come from an overall Fairfax County school listing. As needed, we would add additional applicants through offers on the 1st and 15th of every month through the end of the first quarter of their freshman year. Again, this is in order to maintain that class of 500. And finally, just one point of note, any student who declines their offer of admissions would be removed from future eligibility within the rolling admissions process. What that means is if they, if they said no, they didn't want it at the time, they would not get added back in at a later date. Okay, Dr. Brayband?
Thank you, Jeremy. I wanna show you, again, going back through time, what the impact of a merit lottery could have done and can do for our students here in Fairfax County. On the left would be the percent of offered students with the current process that we've used, on the right would be the application of a merit lottery, going back to the class of 2015, many, many years ago. You can see, instead of the shrinking of the pie, we see an increase in the number of students who would have the opportunity to participate, an increase in our African American and our Latino students, from, again, 1% and 3% up to 6%, from economically disadvantaged, almost twice the number of kids, and our English language learners back in the class of 2015 would go up almost nine times the percentage, from less than a percent to almost 9%. I do wanna be clear here, as we're talking about this, that the selection is on the application and a minimum GPA of 3.5, that's an unweighted GPA at the end of 7th grade, and it includes the first quarter of 8th grade. That's core academic grades only, it includes world language for high school credit, and our recommendation would be to also include the second quarter for 8th grade marks. Let me show you this over time, as I said as well. If we can go to the next slide, the class of 2019, you can see the same expansion of the pie, again, from 2% to 6% for our Hispanic students, from 2% to 8% for African American, and again, for economically disadvantaged, only 1% to almost 9%, and doubling the number for English language learners. That is so, so powerful. I know, one of the things, as I'm going through these slides, some have asked about special education, those, that information is not captured in our current application process, that's something that we can obviously work to try to get further information on. We took a long time to try to look at that data, but that data is not captured through our TJ admissions process. We believe, not only will we see the increase in underrepresented kids that include racial and ethnic identity, economically disadvantaged, second language, but we believe we will also lower the barrier for increased access of special education kids, including those that are twice exceptional, will benefit from this merit lottery proposal. If you go on to take a look at the very final class, the class of 2024, again, the same kind of increases, from 1% of our African American to 7%, from 3% of our Latino to 8%. Look at this most recent class, economically disadvantaged, only 6 tenths of a percent are getting in after the administration of the TJ admissions test. A merit lottery would bring 10% of our economically disadvantaged students, to give them the equity of opportunity and access to be able to participate in Thomas Jefferson. Our English language learners, again, Our English language learners, again, less than a percent to a little over 3.4%. Again, the merit lottery is breaking down barriers. It is time for this wall to come down in Fairfax County Public Schools. I want to now turn it over to Marty Smith to go through the critical decision timeline that we need to share with the board and the community.
Thanks, Dr. Raybrand. So I I do want to point out the timeline here that you see on the screen. Uh, this is a process that we currently have on hold, uh, given that we know we have some outreach with the community and uh, input from the school board before moving forward. But I do want to show you what our current timeline is. So we normally have our application process begin in the fall. And we would uh, have been in the process, beginning the process of ordering those testing materials for students, uh, with our testing occurring in the late fall. Uh, and that semifinalist release uh, mid-January uh, the of giving those students uh, information as to whether or not they uh, made the semifinalist round with our final offers happening in April. And so we did want to uh, provide this adjusted timeline for our community to understand that while the process is on hold, if we move forward with this particular process, this uh, would be the the particular timeline. As you can see with our revised process where we are now, uh, we are uh, presenting this to the board today. Uh, the superintendent has built in opportunities for community outreach and town halls that will occur in late September or early October. Uh, we will then be bringing a final proposal back to the school board on October 8th based on um, information gathering during those uh, community town halls. And then if this process is recommended to move forward, uh, we will then uh, begin that targeted outreach process. Uh, we will then make re- uh, revisions to Regulation 3355, which outlines our process for admissions for TJ. Uh, that would occur in the late fall. Uh, we would uh, develop then the revised process in fall and winter with an application uh, going out in December or January, and then the merit lottery occurring in February or March. And so this is again, of what that timeline would look like if this process is recommended. I do want to talk just a little bit more about our efforts around targeted outreach. Uh, we know that uh, as Dr. Braybrand has said, that the uh, test has been a barrier for students. We've had some outreach uh, in the past uh, with uh, going to middle schools, going to elementary schools and talking about STEM, uh, providing STEM opportunities for students. Uh, but we really haven't been as targeted with our outreach as we possibly could be. So I I want to invite uh, Dr. Anne Bonnet Tatabus, Principal at TJ, to talk about some of our uh, targeted outreach efforts that are part of this proposal.
Thank you for this opportunity. First, I would just like to comment that at TJ, we are a wonderfully diverse school, and we celebrate that diversity every day. And we understand and recognize the CPS efforts to ensure that we are more demographically representative of the region. In terms of outreach, I have been participating with the TJ admissions office for the past couple of years as they've gone out and delivered introductory messages to communities. And we have often looked at schools in particular who receive additional grant monies um, for socio-economic disadvantaged students. Uh, we also want to make sure that when we're talking about outreach, I I like to think of it in terms of you can push out or you can pull in. And um, I'm more and I'm very interested in TJ having more in reach where we are inviting others to come into TJ. So that way, young students can see that they can be a part of TJ. We receive grant funds where we are able to bring students in to planetarium shows. Perhaps we could do more with students accessing our labs when our labs are not being used for our students. And um, just having the opportunity to interact with our students. Um, TJ has hundreds of students that serve as ambassadors, and they visit schools because we know that young children will often look to other children, older children, uh, to mentor them and to inspire them, not just the adults. And so we'll continue in our efforts through our clubs and activities, make those connections out in the community. And I believe that uh, that that with ongoing efforts with outreach and in reach, that we will be able to uh, and just really inspire future generations of students to come to TJ where they can see themselves here at our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. If we can go to the next slide. We recognize that what we are sharing with you today in enhancing the admission process, that is just one step in a multi-pronged strategy. We also know that we need to enhance and expand the pipeline of talent, developing that talent, and ensuring that talent has equitable access to rigorous STEM instruction at the elementary and middle school level. We've done some work in this area, but we have to acknowledge we have more work to do, and we will do it. We also know that we need to ensure a caring culture for all of our TJ students. All of our TJ students, including the TJ students there right now, need more support for transition resources to make sure they're going into a culture and climate in which they will be successful and feel success, but also where they will feel included, feel respected, and feel a part, a complete part of the TJ community. We know creating this caring culture also means more professional development for our staff at TJ, who do an amazing job, who are world-class. And we need to be sure they continue to do all they can to have the tools that they need to support unique needs of all of our learners. We also need to understand in this time, maybe more than ever, the kind of wraparound support for students that's needed. We have got to particularly address the social emotional supports where we want excellence, but we don't want to create an unhealthy environment where we have a a pressure cooker that does not give students the support and the social emotional uh, supports they need to be resilient and to have and maintain a passion, a love for science and technology and math that will stay with them um, their entire life. I want to just share that there is an appendix here that has a link to um, other schools using the lottery system. Many of these are highly rated. You can see one of the first is the Basis schools. We have Basis schools actually out here in Northern Virginia. They're using this in Arizona. And you can see other districts and places that are using the uh, merit lottery system. I want to be clear with you today that we have been talking, this board and the prior board. We have worked hard around equity. We have made efforts uh, around our TJ admissions process. But we have not gotten the outcomes uh, that truly allow us to fully represent the full talent that is in the pool of applicants for TJ. We are recommending, and I plan to move forward uh, with this process after community engagement. Uh, but it is my hope that we will uh, move forward with this merit lottery to increase the equity of opportunity and access for all of our students. We've shown you here clearly that the test, the TJ admissions test for years and years and years has been a barrier to students of talent, to students of merit. And it is time, that admissions test hasn't really just been a barrier, it's been a wall, a wall that's prevented access of opportunity for our students. And it is time today to tear down this wall, to move forward with a new process that provides equity of opportunity and access for the full range of our students here in Fairfax County Public Schools. We are uh, glad now to be willing to take any questions that school board members have. Um, and I will be looking forward to, again, doing community engagement and updating you um, uh, in October, uh, when that engagement is done and moving forward uh, after that feedback with the recommendations that I've shared with you today. So thank you very much, and we'll be glad to take any questions uh, at this time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Braybrand and Mr. Smith for your presentation, and Mr. Schugart, sorry to forget you. Um, and Principal Bonnet Tabis, we really appreciate your participation. Uh, I'd like to start with my colleagues. First up, I have um, actually Ms. McLaughlin asked if she could go first. She has a time commitment, so Dr. Anderson, um, unless you have an objection, I'd like to sneak her in there. Thank you so much. Ms. McLaughlin, you have the floor.
Oh, I think we lost Ms. McLaughlin. Um, Dr. Anderson, if you don't mind stepping in while hopefully she tries to reconnect.
I'm reconnected. No problem. And if she comes in, I'm happy to stop because I do know she has a a time constraint.
Dr. Anderson, you you go right ahead. I've reconnected, but you go ahead.
Are you sure?
Yep, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Um, first of all, Dr. Braybrand and staff, thank you for this presentation. I I think many of us will definitely agree this is overdue and a long time coming. Um, one of the things that I do want to share, even though it's been articulated, I wanted to underscore that I I don't believe, and I don't think any of us believe, that this is the end-all, to-be-all to resolve the issues that we have going on at TJ. We have a pipeline situation that must be addressed, where we're talking about what happens at the middle schools, what happens in the AP um, centers, what happens as students qualify for AP centers, and the preparation that many families are able to offer up to their students and um, brought to TJ. Having said that, I'm going to kind of dig into my questions regarding the plan that you have here. Before I go there, Dr. Braybrand, um, it is well known that both you and Ms. Keys-Gamara are part of the governor's um, task force to make recommendations um, for whatever action that the state chooses to uh, to take. Can you share a little bit in terms of what some of those recommendations have been or those discussions just generally have been at that level?
Thank you, Chairman Anderson, and I I certainly uh, invite um, school board member Karen Keys-Gamara to share her insights as well. Um, there have been discussions, I don't believe at this time that the Secretary of Education has provided any final uh, recommendations from his task force. He did have an informal group that was, he was receiving feedback from. And I know that the secretary is holding um, multiple community forums as he looks at governor schools throughout the Commonwealth of Virginia. I certainly appreciated being invited uh, with uh, uh, invited to that forum along with uh, Ms. Keys-Gamara, also Mr. Smith and Ms. uh, Mr. Schugert and Ms. Bonnet Tabis were all invited, and I appreciate that outreach. Um, and uh, again, we'll wait to see what his final recommendations are. But I think it's important for us to decide what's best uh, here in Fairfax County. And we need to take the steps that we believe are correct, and so we'll certainly share those with the board when they're completed. Um, but uh, I don't have those, um, I don't have those at this time. And I'd be glad to let uh, Ms. Keys-Gamar uh, share any insights.
Ms. Keys-Gamara, if you wouldn't mind.
Oh, of course, of course. Uh, actually, one of the motions I have would allow a greater, more in-depth conversation with the documents that were shared, which I think is completely appropriate. Um, just to give folks an overview of of what did transpire, we met for four or five times. A number of legislators were uh, brought forward. And a a lot of students, which was extremely valuable to hear their direct report of what their experiences have been. These were both students who are currently attending our governor's schools as well as uh, students uh, from the past. Uh, there had also been uh, one student had, who had done a survey of a different governor's school, the Maggie Walker down in the Richmond area. And what I was struck by was that there was pretty much a unanimous view about the culture of these schools being uh, not as healthy as I know all of us on this board would like to hear from our students. Uh, this is not to discount, you know, all the positive things going on and that sort of thing. But I think the the thing that struck me the most was that there were enough incidents that people were re- reporting that uh, would fall in the category of what we discussed in the last work session um, about how there can be racial incidents and how they had not been handled properly. Uh, and so what it underscored for me was some of the work that we talked about this morning. Now, there were, and they did have a presentation and 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 I hope to have an uh, an opportunity in the future to bring forward the documents that were submitted to us. Um, they did look at um, the history of both Maggie Walker as as well as TJ. And um, the primary, you know, concern is that what that creates. And one of the things that stuck stuck with me, there were a number of past uh, students who simply said, as adults, they wouldn't send their children into that environment. And so we really have to do some work to figure out what trauma that can create by students feeling particularly isolated. Uh, Dr. Braybrand is correct when he says that there were no specific recommendations, but there were a number of choices that were discussed. Um, for example, they didn't think that uh, lottery alone as well as uh, picking a number of students from each individual region would alone address the diversity concerns. Um, they were concerned about the number of students who took um, uh, math and and didn't qualify or how they were eliminated along the way. And so uh, I would say that there is great interest in this community across the state in this issue. Uh, and so I'll uh, use my my time to discuss that uh, at a later point. But with respect to uh, this particular group, I think that there were a number of uh, documents that are coming to be shared, and I'll try to make sure I get that to that to you guys later, in addition to the letter I provided you earlier.
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna dive into my questions a little bit regarding the regional approach. Um, Dr. Braybrand, if you wouldn't mind kind of helping me conceptualize what we have here. If we have 70 seats per region, and I'm in region two, where we have six schools, are we anticipating placing all of the kids who qualify from these six schools and then pulling out 70 randomly? Can you confirm that for me, please?
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Jeremy, can you uh, speak to the specifics of how we will conduct the merit lottery for each of the regions?
Uh, sure, Dr. Rayban. So the the idea is that once they go through the the process um, to be selected to be part of the lottery, then each region would hold its own uh, lottery. So region one would have their, all the students that would be appropriate in that particular region would then have a lottery, a random draw in in terms of sequence. Um, so the top 70 students or the first 70 students, maybe not the top, but the first 70 students um, selected would be offered, and then there would be a sequential order based upon the lottery draw. That same process would be repeated for all five regions in Fairfax County. It would also be repeated for all of our participating jurisdictions as well. Uh, so your example of of region two, the students in terms of their base school would be assigned to where their specific region. And then all students who had applied and made, went through the process with the GPA, uh, the um, the questionnaires, those items would then be placed as a whole into that group, and then we would draw based upon the number of students there.
Okay, thank you. Um, did you, do you have any information regarding the students, any class? Um, in terms of what that breakdown is per region? Maybe the class of 2024, 2020, either one?
So if we look at the class of 2020- So, if we look at the class of 2024, the regions as well as the participating jurisdictions do vary. So, if you're looking at numbers, what we're looking at in terms of Region 1 was, now, and I should give this some caveat, because at the time, we did not include our private school students in there. So, that would make an adjustment, which we would have to account for in future. But if you look at it from Region 1 perspective, it was 415 for Region 1, 338 for Region 2, 182 for Region 3, 165 for Region 4, and 274 for Region 5. Do you want me to include the, would you like to include the numbers for the participating jurisdictions?
I don't think so. I think that suffices for what I'm trying to find right now. One of the things that I wanted to articulate in my concerns regarding this regional approach is this. When I took a look at the, that spreadsheet that you shared with us some time ago regarding how many students from each school participated, were applied and were accepted to TJ from 2020 to 2024, across that five-year spread, I have Glasgow, Longfellow, Holmes, Jackson, Kilmer, and Poe in my region. In my district, which is Mason, which is essentially Glasgow, Holmes, and Jackson, we have 15 students from Glasgow, one from Holmes, one from Poe, and 89 from Jackson that I share with Providence. I want to be sure that this regional approach does not automatically place my district at a disadvantage, because we already have so few students that are already attending TJ. Again, one from Holmes across those, that five-year spread, one from Poe, 15 from Glasgow, while we have 279 from Longfellow, 89 from Jackson, and 134 from Kilmer. So, I want to be sure that that is something that we are paying attention to, and I do have a number of other questions I would like to be placed on a go-back. Ms. Cohen.
I'll be happy to put you on a go-back. Thanks, ma'am.
Ms. Cohen, could I?
Was there any response to Ms. Anderson? Yeah. I'm sorry, I apologize. And we also have Ms. Ms. McLaughlin, who I promised that we would get to her in time. So, yes, please respond if you will, and then we'll head to Ms. McLaughlin. I apologize.
So, this is Mr. Smith speaking. I would say about the regional approach with regard to the number of students, while we know we would be looking at that equity across regions, it's also important to think about that targeted outreach slide where we talked about ensuring that students knew more about TJ. One of the things that we didn't cover, but that is in the presentation, is that part of this is sending those recruitment emails and letters to all eligible students. And so, a piece of this, a very big piece of this is the targeted outreach, where we would be encouraging more students who have the merit, as Dr. Braybrand talked about, to actually apply for TJ. And then, once we are able to, you know, focus those targeted outreach efforts, then based on the proportion of students within that overall pool, we would, you know, by probability sake, get that same reflection for students who would receive those letters.
Dr. Anderson, does that, does that answer your question?
Um, not really, but I'll catch up on my go-back.
Okay, thanks very much. Sorry, Ms. McLaughlin.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Not clear.
Great. It's not very clear. Is this better, Carl?
You're great.
Oh, awesome.
Yep, you're great.
Okay, please start the time now, Ms. Medea. So, let me just begin. First of all, Dr. Braybrand, I really appreciate that you took the time to speak with each of the board members to get our thoughts at a macro level. So, as a glow, I want to thank you for that. But as a grow, I want to share with you that I am deeply concerned that the board did not have any of this written information nor the public until about 11 o'clock today when it was posted. TJ is an internationally renowned high school for, I believe, almost 35 years. I do not understand this timeline. I think it is extremely aggressive. Having been on this board for eight years, I have been a champion for us improving the diversity of representation at TJ. I'm a former Georgetown admissions officer. I've seen how selective admissions can also ensure a rich diverse university based on your applicant pool, but there is data missing here. We don't have anything based on what the demographics are for the applicant pool to the accepted pool to, who chooses to enroll. Those are key. We don't know about why the regions were never set up in any particular way that would then be utilized immediately to translate into defined and set admission slots. I mean, universities, selective universities, don't sit there and say every state gets X number of spots and that's it. I mean, this is a very complex and important process, and I think we can get there, but there's no analysis that you've provided from the other five schools across the country that you're citing in the appendix. So, my first question, Dr. Braybrand, is why are you rushing this when we need to make sure we do this right, not that we just do it fast?
Well, thanks, Ms. McLaughlin. A couple of things. First, let me just say about community outreach. There's a lot of outreach that is going to be going on. I know the TJ Partnership Fund has a town hall this evening. I know that Secretary Carney has planned three community forums and has already conducted some of them around TJ. I am doing a town hall next Wednesday at 7:00 PM, which I'll be sharing out today in a news release. We are setting up a dedicated webpage with questions and answers, and we will have a dedicated inbox to receive written comments at tjcomments@fcps.edu. So, we'll be getting all of that out. I, I think the issue of rush, are we going too fast or too slow, is certainly something that we can have a discussion about, of course, with the board, but I think there are many who would say that this is a discussion that has gone on year after year, and time to do something differently. We've not gotten the results of really capturing all the talent that we had in the pool. And again, this is merit already in the pool that is getting drained out because of the application of the admissions test. So, I do think, I do think the time is now to do it. If we're going to do it for the admissions for next year, we have to make a decision soon, because if not, we have to begin to administer the TJ admissions this fall to be ready to do that work in the winter. We also have, as you may know, that the state did ask, the General Assembly is part of the budget process, for all governor schools, including Thomas Jefferson, to submit a plan around how to expand access of opportunity for governor schools by October 1st. I asked for and received an additional week from the Secretary of Education, and I have factored that in. So, those are, that's my feedback, and I appreciate, I appreciate your comments.
So, I appreciate what you've just shared, Dr. Braybrand. A plan does not mean you have to then execute the next week. So, I think that we are talking, three weeks from now, you would be bringing this back to the board with community feedback saying, "Go, no-go." And there is no way, while we're in the midst of a pandemic, we are supposed to be trying to figure out how to bring 189,000 kids back into in-person learning. At minimum, we're trying to just figure out what's going to happen in the next quarter. I absolutely ask all of my colleagues, do not signal to the superintendent that we're going to change TJ admissions three weeks from now. I am deeply committed to saying, "We're going to get all of the details so that the desire to fix this is there." The appropriate solution, you mess this up and you mess up not only one of the most revered governor schools in the country, this will be devastating to our school system and our school boards and our community's reputation. So...
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. I appreciate it, and if you'd like to have a go-back, I'm happy to add you back.
You can put me on in case I'm still able to stay on. Thank you.
Excellent. Thanks very much. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, you're up next, and then followed by Ms. Tolan. Oh, sorry, followed by Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Was there any response to that? I'm happy to go, but I didn't want to cut anybody off.
I'm so sorry. I didn't hear a question at the end, other than just addressed to colleagues, so I didn't hear anything for staff to answer there. Maybe if Ms. McLaughlin feels differently, she's certainly welcome to weigh in.
Well, I just, I would like, I would like Dr. Braybrand to answer, while we're in the midst of a pandemic, why is he not considering that we submit our plan, but we don't execute until next year's admissions process? I'd like an answer to that.
My quickest answer is, if the board chooses that, you will have the same results that you had last spring, and the spring before that, and five years before that, and a decade before that. I arrived as an intern 25 years ago, and TJ admissions was a subject of major debate in this county. We have made good faith efforts over multiple boards to try to improve the TJ admissions process, and I think we have to acknowledge it has not, it has fallen short of what we have wanted. And I think this is a moment when we are saying it's time for a call to action for equity, that we need to do something differently. And this is one step in a multi-pronged approach that can help us improve, improve our advanced academics programs, including improving, improving TJ. Thank you.
But, Dr. Braybrand...
Thank you so much. Ms. McLaughlin, no, I'm so sorry, Ms. McLaughlin, but you spoke fast enough, and Dr. Braybrand has answered to the best of... Ms. McLaughlin, I really appreciate, I very much appreciate your passion and your frustration, but we're going to need to move on to Ms. Keys-Gamarra. And if you're here for a go-back, I'm so happy to yield you the floor. Ms. Keys-Gamarra, you're up.
So, I wasn't going to start with this, but I think I have to. We are in a very different position this year than we have been in previous years, and even if we wanted to do what we've previously done, I don't know how we could. We are having a virtual start. I'm not sure how we are going to test students under, while we're in a pandemic. According to your timeline, we would be entering that phase, you know, in a few weeks anyway. And so, I think based on where we are right now, there will have to be some changes, and those changes are forced upon us due to the circumstances of the pandemic. So, I, I would have difficulty saying that it's going to be business as usual when we know that so many students have been disadvantaged simply by virtue of the fact that we are in a pandemic, and students of color, students economically disadvantaged, students, students with disabilities, have been the students who have been most negatively impacted during this time period. So, I think we have to think about how we're going to handle this in, during the pandemic, and so, I support trying to come up with a plan. I will say this, Dr. Braybrand, I, and I think I'm probably going to run out of time, so let me get to the punchline and come back to the details later. I would like for this board to consider that we very, the board very much has to be a part of these discussions to the extent that we can. We are on a rushed timeline. The super, the, I'm sorry, the, Mr. Carney, Secretary of Education, has let us know that the state will be making some recommendations effective immediately, and I understand that because we are dealing with the pandemic. So, I would like to plan to have additional work sessions, as well as have school board members working specifically on this topic, so that we can look at some of that historical information. There's a wealth of information from MSAOC. There are a number of documents from the task force. There's the Blue Ribbon Commission study that was done many, many years ago. So, there is a wealth of information with a number of recommendations that were made even without a pandemic, recognizing that we have a problem. And so, I think that we have to, we have to realize that we are in an urgent emergency situation, and we have to make that kind of a decision. If there's anything else that I can hit on, it is that I was so horribly grieved by the number of students who have contacted me, not just during the task force, but since that time, about the atmosphere that we have to talk about, which I hope we can do when we set up, hopefully, we agree to set up a committee to work on this.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamarra. Dr. Braybrand, do you have a response?
Well, I'll certainly continue to listen to Ms. Keys-Gamarra and the other board members about how we do engagement over the next three weeks. You know, we, we're doing a lot. We can do work with the school board around that engagement and talk about how school board members can also be getting feedback to help inform us, and as far as committees or how to do the work over the next three weeks, you know, I'll certainly be willing to listen. I agree with Ms. Keys-Gamarra that it is not business as usual. It is a moment, this is a moment for us to do the right thing for our kids and the right thing for equity, and I hope that the board will embrace this moment. I do believe it's a moment that we can really create true equity of access and opportunity for all of our students.
Thanks very much. Ms. Corbett Sanders, you have the floor.
Thank you. A couple of things. One, I do want to bring attention to all of my colleagues that this concept of a merit-based admission without a test, because that's really what we're talking about, is merit-based on GPA and a holistic review of kids. That is consistent with over 1,000 universities across the United States, including Stanford, Columbia, Barnard, Bowdoin, many of the top schools in the country. So, I don't think that this is out of, out of the ordinary to pursue a merit-based system that is not based on a test. Secondly, although, having said that, I have a couple of questions. What are the measures of effectiveness, and what's the process for evaluating whether or not this is effective? Secondly, what do we do about the families that move into the region after the first semester of eighth grade? Third, you have set the October 8th meeting as when you will next update the board, but that is the same day that you are supposed to submit something to Richmond, and our meeting is on the evening of the 8th. Is it your intention to submit something to the state without this board reviewing it and seeing the outcome? And if not, then why aren't we asking for a delay longer than October 8th for the, for the state submission? And then, the last piece is, there are two others. Math, math and science in our elementary schools, I fully support making sure that we have fidelity of implementation, but we actually have to have consistency where every single one of our elementary schools has the same level of academic rigor in the maths and sciences, and that the same level of opportunities. We have schools with science fairs, we have others that don't. We have schools that start advanced math in sixth grade, we have others that started in second grade. So, we need to address that pipeline issue and making sure that the FCPS promise is honored by all and not by some. And then, the last, another piece is, a few years ago, there was outrage at TJ because after changes to the test, there were a significant number of new students that were admitted, and then there were concerns because they had to do remediation on math. What are you doing to work with the, the teachers at TJ so that they understand that in the same way that we do remediation and mitigation of gaps with students at every other high school, that that can be expected at TJ as well? with students at every other high school, that that can be expected at TJ as well. And I think that's it for now. But in general, I think you are on the right track and it's consistent with what some of the top universities have done.
Thank you. Dr. Brabran, would you like to address the timeline question first?
Yeah. Well, first of all, it's, I asked for October 9th, the day after, and I can certainly ask to extend it if necessary. If that's the next step from the board, I can certainly go back to the Secretary of Education and see if we can get a longer timeline. The effectiveness would be, again, as we've tried to share on those slides, a greater percentage of the diversity of FCPS in our final admissions group to TJ. And we were showing that sort of semifinal applicant pool. We want the applicant pool and the actual admissions class to be closer. And again, the applicant pool will still have to have a criteria met to be in the applicant pool, including a revised GPA from a 3.0 to a 3.5. I'd have to have Jeremy answer the first semester eighth grade question, and I'll give him a second to do that in a minute. And Ann can talk a little bit about working with the faculty. We do have plans to work with the faculty and are working with the faculty. And then I would tell you that the consistency and around math and science is certainly something we need to talk about. And we'll be talking about that next month when we do our AAP recommendations. But Jeremy and Ann, do you want to make some comments to Ms. Corbett Sanders' question?
This is Jeremy. Ms. Corbett Sanders, can you clarify the question that you said there? Just so I make sure I'm responding to you in terms of what you had said.
So I had a number of questions regarding the eighth grade. We have people who move in, move into our district or into neighboring districts after their children are in eighth grade. What are, how would they fall into this pool? Given that they may miss that initial cutoff period. Today, we have later admissions by students. What you are suggesting is that we would not have, it sounds like we wouldn't have a summer program for admissions for latecomers to the area.
Correct. We did not, in this proposal, we did not include a summer round. Our consideration was adding them into the applicant pool, but not, or the lottery pool if they meet the qualification, but not necessarily redrawing the lottery. But that certainly could be something we could consider.
So.
So the other add-on to this that I would say is that our consideration is also to them have adjustments to our sophomore round admissions as well, that we would be reflective of what we're, what we're proposing for our freshman round. So that that way, students that are coming in late, because we're dramatically altering when the application round is, and it's a much later timeframe in the year, there's, there will be fewer students that wouldn't be eligible to be able to apply, having a potential December, January timeframe for the application. So we are closer towards the end of the school year than what we were previously. Our previous spring or summer round, as we called it, was actually a mid-spring. They were typically, they were, had to have their submissions or their applications completed in, before the end of April. You know, so we were only, we're only off by just a couple of months there in terms of the last few years.
So the other questions were regarding remediation and the support for remediation in the school. And the other piece was, and this, I was not focusing on only our AAP centers. It was ensuring a fidelity of advanced math and science opportunities at every school and not just our, the AAP centers, where we also know there's a diversity in what's available at each one. Does somebody want to address those two questions?
Sure. I can address your question about remediation and program development. When we're working with students, I like to think of looking at our students from a talent search, talent spot, and talent development kind of framework. And I believe it's our responsibility to meet the students where they are as they enter each of those categorizations. And to me, that's more of an asset model when we're working with students as opposed to a deficit. Which perhaps might have been some dispositions held in the past. Some of those conditions you described predate my arrival at TJ. And that's not, that certainly isn't the disposition I've seen since I've been here the past three years. We currently do have programs in place within our mathematics department where adjustments are made for students based on mood, so they may enter the school, coming in at one particular level. And then our teachers are very skilled at working with them, developing that talent, spotting the talent, searching the talent, and then making adjustments. Additionally, any student in FCPS who is enrolled in Algebra I in eighth grade can and will be on track for a TJ diploma, which requires a student to complete calculus in their senior year. While we know that we have many students who excel past the level of calculus, I am confident that students coming in will be able to reach the TJ diploma standards with our teachers. We know that we will have to continue to utilize every resource. So that way, for students who are struggling, we are providing tutoring during real time in class time, that we are continuing to utilize our eighth period to provide those enhancements and enrichments as well. The other piece is that we need to be mindful that a governor's school is looking for talent and particularly is reserved for gifted populations. And gifted students have been identified as a new at-risk population. They have special needs. We know that they learn better in smaller environments. And we would need to have the resources, I believe, in mathematics to support students because a student who may be gifted in one particular area, as we know, does not demonstrate giftedness across the board in all content areas. And so those are just some pieces. And I know that our teachers are eager to raise conversations and they are very willing to support our students to meet our diploma requirements.
Thank you. Do you, Dr. Brabran, I didn't mean to interrupt. Do you have something to add?
No. Dr. Presidio, did you want to say anything about math and science at elementary beyond advanced academics that you want to share at this time, or should we just plan it up date for October?
I think that best course would probably be to provide an update in October when we have the work section on AAP in general. We are working very hard on the fidelity of education efforts in that Corbett Sanders mentioned.
Thank you.
Can I ask that that's beyond the AAP, though?
Correct. Part of, yes, correct. Part of it is making sure that, again, as we talk about these issues of opportunity and access, that we're ensuring that those advanced math opportunities, for example, are available consistently across all of our schools.
Thank you. Thank you. I have Ms. Tolan next, followed by Ms. Marin.
Yes. Hello. Of course, this whole idea of diversity in organizations is a huge national issue. It's not just limited to education. And it's very complex and difficult to dissect and figure out what is the best way to move forward. You know, I support looking at TJ admissions. I expressed to many people, many staff members, many board members, my interest in working on the pipeline issues. And, you know, dealing with the hard, time-consuming work that needs to happen around that. And of course, to provide support for students at TJ. However, looking at the presentation and, you know, what's before us today, I have to agree with some of the comments made by my colleague Megan McLaughlin. I'm really concerned about moving forward with this plan with no community engagement or very little community engagement, you know, to date. I know that there have been, you know, some conversations, but the community has not really been at the table. I'm a little worried too about the, the use of town halls moving forward over the next couple of weeks. I mean, I've certainly run my share of town halls over the last year and a half. And you can answer a lot of questions, but it doesn't really give you an opportunity to sit down at the table and hear from people and get ideas. We have people out in our community with lots of great ideas and an interest to talk about this with a whole, you know, set of viewpoints and, you know, backgrounds. And I would like to see more of that happen. Of course, it's very difficult to do that in three weeks. So I would strongly encourage us to, you know, talk to the states about what our options are for this October deadline. Is there any way we can submit in October, you know, our community engagement plan? What are we doing to really, really sit down and talk to our community, you know, on this big topic? I also think that there are so many ramifications with what we are doing that we really need to take a close look at. One specific question that I did have, looking at the presentation, is where are the numbers coming from? When you're talking about the merit lottery and you've got the pie chart showing, you know, what the statistics would be if we had used the merit lottery? Is that just a statistical sampling or, you know, where does that number come from? How are we using that to show that we would have that level of success?
Jeremy, could you, could you answer Ms. Tolan's question?
Sure. So in terms of the modeling, what we have is we have information for all of our students at the application level. And so what we were able to do is we were able to take the applicants in the various years that we had used, the 20, the class of 2015, class of 2019, class of 2024. And then we were able to take that information and then do some modeling or statistics projections of what that would look like for those students that met those minimums. Again, this is a model for what we're putting it out there. A lot of it is just statistical representations in terms of random, you know, like a random draw. So we applied those rules to the previous classes to be able to get an idea of who would be meeting that. And that's how we move forward.
So that's one way to look at it. I think we've already heard too, there, we have so many questions out there around, you know, who's applying? Why have our application numbers dropped recently over the last several years? Why are some applicants that are offered admission, why are they not coming? In relation to education, what are some of the other questions around that? I'll definitely need to go back.
You got it. Mr. Schugardt, did you want to respond to that, or?
In terms of numbers, historically, we have seen, over the last couple of years, we've seen about 2,500 students that are applicants. Prior to that, probably the five years prior to that, it was closer to 3,000. But over time, as you saw from the previous charts, we still have a large number of students that apply. And I, and we certainly can address this in the, in the go back then.
Thank you. We're moving on to Ms. Marin, followed by Ms. Sizmore Heiser.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Cohn. So I've been listening and two, two sayings are rumbling around in my head. One is that I've said many times before, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. And look, students at TJ are suffering. Alumni have told us heart-wrenching stories of what they've gone through. We have letters from classes of graduates with hundreds of signatures saying that diversity needs to be addressed. So I, I just think that no matter what we do, there won't be a perfect solution. But the other saying that keeps roaming around in my head is the definition of insanity is continuing to do the same thing and expecting different outcomes. I thought the slide showing all the steps that have been taken to marginally increase access is really telling. And I just don't think at this time, in this era, with the momentum of this board and the superintendent's proposal, that we can sit here and say, let's take more time, let's find more options. I mean, people are hurting. We've heard from a student who I've spoken many times with now, who tried to bleach her skin because she didn't feel welcome as a black student in this school. It's toxic for those students who feel left out. It's toxic for students who are doing the bullying. It's a diverse world. We are serving our kids better when we let them and, and help them engage with people who are different than them. It's a, it's a workforce criteria these days. So, you know, there's a lot about TJ I don't know. But what I seem to know is, I've heard a lot of community outreach. People are speaking at our regular public meetings and they're, they're emailing us, they're sending us things. So I, I'm ready for action and I'd like to know more, but I think that doing more of the same won't really, won't suffice anymore. I do want to say that I am disappointed to not see access for our students with special needs and other abilities and the neurodiversity population. I think that's a really big factor that's lacking because we have heard specifically about students who are twice exceptional and looking demographically as needed, but it certainly doesn't capture those students and their talent and merit. So I'd also like to hear how TJ's principal was involved with the creation of this approach and what she thinks and how she sees this fitting into the overall efforts to make TJ even better than it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. I'm going to let Ann speak in a moment. I just want to say, the issue around twice exceptional kids, we believe this proposal will expand the pool for that. But as Jeremy shared with me, we just don't have that kind of data in the application. That may be something we can work on in the months ahead to bring you as we're doing the modeling. And Jeremy, do you want to speak to that real briefly and then we'll let Ann speak to Ms. Marin's question?
Sure. So in terms of the application process, it is in a data point that gets submitted while a student applies. What we do have is only if students request accommodations, which are captured in a very different way, which then blends everything together between students with 504s, special ed, along with anyone that might have medical disabilities or whatever the case may be. However, with that said, we also know that not all students that have, that are special education students even apply or even request accommodations, and so we don't have access to that. So the, the issue is trying to find out who those students are. And we wouldn't have access to that information from an applicant pool for our other jurisdictions. We would only be able to have access to the students here in Fairfax County. So it would take some, it would take some time to be able to dig through it and get that as a portion. We do deal with some accommodations, but it was certainly, was not something that we were able to pull together for this presentation.
Okay. Thanks for the info.
Ann?
Sure. Ms. Marin, would you mind restating your question for me to make sure that I accurately captured it?
Sure. I was wondering what your involvement has been in the process of developing the presentation we heard today? And also how you, you know, how strongly you feel that this is the best step forward for your school?
Thank you. I will say that one of the things that drew me to TJ three years ago and actually made me seek the position was the, the notion that school could be more representative of, of its region. I read an awful lot about TJ and I was hopeful that perhaps I could be an influencer and a positive force and a unifier in the process. And so most recently, I would say within the past several months, as FCPS has been, you know, grappling with this issue, as has the state with all of the directors of governor schools, I have been involved in certain conversations. I've been involved with the task force that Secretary Carney put together. And I appreciated being a part of that. Dr. Brabran and Mr. Smith have also reached out to me periodically over the past several weeks and have included me in some of the conversations. Feedback, I would say that it's been a large representative group of everybody giving feedback. I would say that we are all united in, in believing that there is a statistically significant enough difference in, in the disparities that we're seeing, that action does need to be taken. It does need to be taken sooner than later. And I am fully supportive of FCPS efforts to advance the representative demographics. to advance the representative demographics at our school. I also feel that our staff is well poised and receptive to welcoming all students regardless of background or circumstance and helping them be successful. I often say that our students are more than a GPA to us and we are their GPS. And we help them navigate those, those bumps along the road. And sometimes we help them find the speed pass lane so they can accelerate. And I'm looking forward really to, to, to leading the, the next generation of TJ, regardless of the outcomes of, of this process. And I feel that we are moving definitely in the right direction to expand opportunities. We need to find talent, we need to develop talent. And TJ is the school to do that. And I do not believe that, that, that FCPS is going to create processes that diminish our, our stature as a school because I'm confident in our teachers' amazing ability to work with all students. And I also want to make sure that when we talk about representative demographics and providing more opportunities to students, that we do not approach it with a deficit model, thinking that having a different composition of students at TJ somehow means that, that those students are not going to contribute to the success of our school. Right now, we have a wonderfully diverse school of all backgrounds, all races, all ethnicities, and all students contribute to the success. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I mean, that's pretty resounding support for continuing forward. And you have mentioned that the school is diverse, but at the same time, it seems, you know, it's not to the extent to which you or the division and the community think. So I think it's, that's really important for colleagues to hear that you as the principal support this effort. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and let Ms. Pukarski go next and then come back to Ms. Sizemore-Hizer.
Okay, sure. Thank you. Thank you for this work. Obviously, this is an issue that is just an FCPS issue. You know, increasing diversity. I, I wholeheartedly agree it's necessary. I agree that it's part of an overall strong education. My kids go to diverse schools not by accident, not by mistake, but by intentionality. And, you know, having said that, I, I want to do this work. I want to do this work in a way that is intentional for, for us to have long lasting positive results. I don't believe in Band-Aids. I don't believe in, in, in fast work. And, you know, I know others would argue that that is not what is happening here. But some of the questions, you know, the missing data that Ms. McLaughlin brought up, that troubles me. What also troubles me is not knowing what kind of outreach have we done to our families, to survey our families, to, to get some of the answers. You know, some, we think we know what they are and, and we would have, you know, I think all agree. But as to why we don't have a large number of applications from more diverse student pool, that, that is a, that's an important question to me because it, it speaks to how do you fix the problem or at least part of the problem? And as far as I know, we have not done that. Can somebody speak to that a little bit?
Ms. Pukarski, thank you. Can you clarify about not, having not done what now? Which part?
We, we, when you look at the application pool, we do not have large numbers of applications from students who are, are, you know, large diverse, from are Hispanic, from so on and so forth. Why? Why, Dr. Bray? I mean, do we have any information surrounding that?
Jeremy, I'm going to let you take a first response if there were previous work on TJ where we were able to find that out. We've seen low levels of applicants for some groups for some time. And we've seen a great decline among some other groups of kids that had previously applied. Jeremy, have we done any work around those trends over the last several years in the TJ work?
So we haven't actually done any type of studies that would reach out and do surveys of why people aren't applying. What you can see if you, if you reflect back to the presentation, it was one of the first slides, I think it was slide four, was showed the overall, that was a 15-year trend. So what we're talking about is going back shortly after someone had mentioned previously the Blue Ribbon Commission. And there were some recommendations that came out of the Blue Ribbon Commission for us. And so there was a lot of steps that were made to adopt those suggestions in terms of what was going on within the Blue Ribbon Commission. And as you saw additional changes, specifically with the outreach position was one of those recommendations coming out of the commission that wasn't implemented until a number of years later. At that point in time, quite honestly, that was the goal. And that was the targeted outreach for our outreach specialist position was to increase and enhance the, our minority student applicants with the goal of then increasing the number of students that were ultimately admitted into and provided an offer to TJ. What we found over time was, and as we've evolved, the work of the outreach position was trying to identify those students earlier. And that work has, you know, has transitioned from working with just students in middle school to students also at the elementary levels. Unfortunately, due to this budgetary cuts, that position also was cut for us. And so the amount of work that that person was able to, to contribute at that point in time was greatly reduced as well. And so we've tried to find additional ways to be able to reach out and get students. Currently, most of our targeted work is at our Title I schools and our historically underrepresented schools from, from a geographic standpoint, which also represents larger portions in some areas of our lacking diversity as well. And so those were issues and things that I've done. And we've made internal changes to try to address those issues as well.
Ms. Pukarski, I'd also say, so, you know, we've done some we haven't done. There's more we could do. But I would say this, hearing just as Ms. Kies-Gamar mentioned, the voices of students on the task force and several of the alumni associations, TJ has, has developed a reputation. And there is a reputation that is the, the, the great positive side of it, but there's also that underside and that many of our students of color don't feel welcome, don't feel respected, are questioned why they're there. And I, I believe that that has had an impact on who would even want to apply, let alone go through all the work of trying to be the highest scorer on the admissions test to then get in that environment. We've also seen a decline, and you can see on that chart, among our white students who are choosing not to apply. I don't have as much information granularly on that. And I think that is a conversation with the alumni groups over time. But I did, I will tell you that we received, I received an alumni letter just recently from a white alumni of many years ago saying it's not, it's not set up to be a school for the 21st century with the kind of diversity that he wanted or that he needed to have the kind of success that you need to have in working with people across the globe, across cultures. So I think we can dig into that deeper. But I do think there's already some messaging internally that has gone on that has suppressed applicants based on stories that we have heard.
So I appreciate that, Dr. Braybrand, and probably so. I, I cannot disagree with it. But without the outreach, without connecting with these families, cutting the outreach position, you know, that's worrisome to me that, that we're not doing that level of, of, in, you know, interaction with our families because what if there are other, you know, factors to this? What if some feel the, the transportation is an issue? You know, if we move to this model of the regional approach, I'll take a go back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pukarski. We have Ms. Sizemore-Hizer next. Ms. Sizemore-Hizer, we are not getting your audio for some reason. We cannot. You want to try to reconnect and we'll, okay. All right, Ms. Darnett-Kofax, do you mind stepping up to the plate? And then we'll get Ms. Sizemore-Hizer when she reconnects.
Sure. Um, I thank you, Dr. Braybrand, and thank you, Jeremy, for this presentation. I have some comments and then I have some questions. I, I do want to say that since I began on this board in 2012, we have been committed to do what is best for each and every one of our students and to help our diverse population reach their fullest potential. We have held numerous work sessions and extensive conversations about TJ over these past eight years. And equity was always at the center and at the core. You saw some staff's presentation. We've changed the admissions standards five times. Outreach programs have been added, but you have heard that they have not been implemented with fidelity, nor have they been sustained. I don't think it's been a lack of caring or a lack of political will that has gotten us here. But the changes in the last 10 years that we've made simply have not yielded the results that we wanted. And while I know we continue to try, that's why we're here looking for our sixth change with equity at the core. But there are strategies and opportunities that I must speak to that have to begin to prepare students, particularly in my region. Several of my colleagues have talked about this. And these are all pipeline issues and these are root issues at the core. We need universal pre-K. We need outreach. We need to front load the curriculum with advanced learning opportunities for all children with fidelity in math and science in all of our regions. We have never committed to that financially, ever, ever, ever. We need advanced academic resource teachers at every school. We still have 42 teachers that don't have advanced academic resource teachers. All of these good programs can't happen even with goodwill if we don't have people on the ground, boots on the ground, trying to help our underserved or unidentified populations. We have to, in work, we have young scholars. That was a program developed by a teacher in 2000. It is a great program where it's administered well, but it is not administered uniformly or with fidelity. And I think we also have to consider other magnet schools to ensure more opportunities. So for me, right now where I am on this, I like the allotment of the regional slots. I like the idea that's been talked about before, oh, the idea of in-reach. I love that idea, but like I said, with marginal success. My question, Dr. Braybrand, other than GPA, does the questionnaire carry any weight? Other consultants that we have used most recently have talked about a universal screener as a best practice. Have you reached out to them to review your changes to TJ? What is the purpose of us doing this now if the Secretary of Education has announced he is proposing policy changes? Were all changes standalone or would it be subject to school changes? And put me on a go back. So if you can answer, begin, answer my questions and I can repeat them.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'm going to try to take most of them. Let me see, I was writing. You know, I respect the Secretary of Education and, and he has, he has a job to do as the Secretary of Education. And I think I have a job to do as superintendent of Fairfax County Public Schools. We can, we can lead or wait to be led. And I prefer to lead and work in partnership with this board to lead in taking the next step on our journey to creating a, an even better TJ, which you've talked about, that this board, prior boards have been a part of doing that journey. It's time to take the next step in the journey. I totally agree with you. There are other things that we can do and will do around the pipeline. So this is just one part of that multi-pronged approach that we referenced. And I know you asked me another question and I don't think I answered it in there.
There were two more. Other than the GPA, does the questionnaire, does that carry any weight to get into the pool?
Yeah. Jeremy, can you talk a little about the questionnaire that we're going to develop? And even about our ideas beyond this year? We, we don't feel we have time for this year, but even next year, developing an interview process. But Jeremy, as far as the questionnaire, can you talk about its role? And we've proposed today.
Sure, Dr. Braybrand. One of the pieces about the questionnaire was really that it, on some levels, it models the student information sheet of previous years, but it's designed, so all of our previous process was about designing a ranking system, how, how highly students can perform. And it really was a ranking and sorting, plus, and going through that process. But what we're looking at here is we're looking for students to be able to meet, you know, a set of criteria, basically saying, we're looking at passion, we're looking at commitment, we're looking at, you know, student match with TJ, which is a lot of things that we've talked about in the past. We're talking about when we reach out to students and have these conversations with families and, and students that are looking at TJ as a, as a high school option, about trying to figure that out. And I think that that goes back to a lot of the elements that we've talked about, why students would want to go to a, a school that has a STEM focus. And so the questionnaire is a part of looking at this merit within a GPA, particular classes that they're enrolled in in terms of algebra being the, the, the baseline. And it's about meeting these baselines. So it would play a role. And it's, and one of the things that we're going to look to do this fall is redesign kind of what our former student information seat was to a new process that includes questionnaires, short answer, maybe essays. And those are some things that we're going to be working on in development. And there would be conversations in terms of consulting with other groups, perhaps some of those other schools that we have mentioned here. And, and are those experiences that they've used with success? In terms of to respond or add to what Dr. Braybrand was talking about in the future, there were other options that we were considering for additional components to an application process. But what we also recognized was, you know, the time and the fidelity of implementing it and making sure that was implemented, you know, really correctly. And so there was a lot of conversation about actual student interviews and the potential of interviewing students and having that be a part of this process of driving home that idea of that passion and that commitment to the, to learning in this type of an environment and being able to engage with the students in that way. And we wanted to make sure that that was done appropriately. And we didn't feel that within, within the timeframe of what we had, to be able to fully evaluate and investigate an application process that had actual interviews, it wasn't something that we felt that, that this was something we could look to implement in this year or in this cycle. But it could be something that was considered into a future year or future cycle.
I, I get that, but I, I guess, will there be a weighted element to this? Or, or will, where, will there be a panel that reviews this questionnaire? Will there be any, anything? And any kind of panel looking at this? Will this add to a person's ability to get in the pool? I guess, or 3.5 the main thing?
So the, the 3.5 would be, would be a minimum. But yes, there would be panels that would review the, the questionnaire as well. I would, I would say that that would be similar to what we currently do in terms of having panel evaluators go through and, and evaluate the current application. So there would be some elements of that that we would look at in this, in this case as well.
Okay.
And I think finally, Tammy, the, it's not necessarily a weighted, where students that would answer the, the strongest or have the strongest would have a higher weighting in that. We're looking at removing the barriers and then allowing them to be selected through a lottery process. But, you know, with like the, the equality pieces or the, the equity pieces here.
Okay. And Ms. Cohn, just because Dr. Braybrand, I think, didn't, he, because he asked me the three questions. I, I guess, Dr. Bray Brandon, I understand our desire to be leaders and, and go forward. But do you know, status-wise, would the Secretary of Education be allowed to come in and say, well, this is fine that you did this, but, but we're still going to? Because in the last town hall that I listened to, he said, I will be making policy suggestions and it will pilot, I will be piloting my policies in these two schools. That was the statement he made in a previous town hall that I listened to last Monday.
Yeah, I haven't had that conversation with him. I certainly can. And I know many members of the school board have interacted with Secretary Carney. And so we can have that dialogue. Again, I, I think personally, as I said, I'd rather have Fairfax solutions for Fairfax students.
But I think that's really important that we understand whether or not that's going to happen. So I, I would like an answer to that. And as I said, Ms. Cohen, a go back, please.
And, and Ms. Darnett Kofax, what I would suggest then, if you could give me that specific question that I, and then I will send that to him so I can get a specific answer.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Next, we have Ms. Sizemore Heiser and followed by Mr.
Is this working now? Awesome, great. I'm really happy to follow some of my colleagues. I am a full believer in both the diversity of our applicant pool and diversity at TJ. It is in the workplace, very, very valuable to the point of Dr. Bray Brandon. So I'm excited to see that we're being bold in what we're doing. However, similar to what Ms. Pekarski said, I want to make sure we're actually addressing the issue so it has long-term changes. It actually, it fixes the problem. So I guess what I don't quite understand is how does this lottery system really address the concern about both supporting our students of color at TJ and making sure that we're spotting the talent of our students of color? They're encouraged to, to enter. So one of the examples is if we have 70 slots per region, two of the regions, I don't know if it would change anything considering the two of our sort of higher feeder schools are in those regions. So how does, I just, I don't understand how this is really going to move the needle in the way that we're, we're seeking to do it.
Well, let me try sharing and then Jeremy, our Ann, or anybody else who wants to add in can. We have merit in the pool. We have kids qualified to go to TJ every year. And then what we've done now for years is we, then we administer a test and the highest scorer wins. And people with access to test prep will spend, and Ann has told me, anywhere from $10,000 to $15,000 a year. So this is saying, that is a barrier to lots of kids economically disadvantaged. You see the difference when you put that test in? A lot of those kids were screened out.
Absolutely, I understand that. I guess my point is why are we doing it 70 per region as opposed to a lottery system across the county perhaps? Because it, this seems like it's disadvantaging some of the regions we're specifically trying to help that may have, I don't know, it just seems, it just, I don't know, it's, I'm wondering why the regional approach.
Yeah, I, I mean, we can, this is what I'd say and then Jeremy can answer. One geographic distribution at TSA, TJ has been a issue discussed and debated for decades. There's a lot of debate that the school board has set about certain cultures in schools that get created. When you're at a school where every kid gets in, you want to get in too. And if you're at a school where no kid gets in, why apply? If you can never get drafted for the NFL at your college or the NBA, why would you play this sport? So why would you work extra hard in science and math and apply when no kid, year after year, or one or two only get in? I think, I think we, the cultures of schools, there are more qualified kids that can get in TJ, that can get in.
Do you know what the applicant, the diversity applicant pool is? Or diversity geographically as well as by race? Because I think my concern is that if, are we addressing where the problem really lies? I understand the biases in the test and test prep. So I'm not looking to challenge that, that part of the admissions process. But if the issue is getting kids to apply who are qualified and should be at TJ or building that pipeline, should we be, is this the right approach to addressing this solution with the concern?
Right, so I, let me say it a simpler way, if this makes sense. The left side of the graphs I showed you for applicants, we already get some diversity, much more than what we actually put in the class because we administer the test. So if we change no outreach, we'd actually get more diversity in through the merit lottery that already exists in the pipeline. That's part of this whole point. Drop the test and diversity is right in front of us that never gets through the TJ door. Then it's about increasing the pipeline as some other school board members and you have talked about, and making sure that environment in the school, as Ann has talked about, is a welcoming, caring culture environment for every kid. You do all three of those, I think you even start to change the number of applicants. But the number of applicants is what we showed you on that left-hand side, the applicants for the pie chart. That's our current, that's our current group. And that's the group that would get in based on the merit lottery. It would just be done by a lottery instead of a test to see who gets the highest score and then you get in.
I guess the question I have is how do we know that the, the process to get into the pool is the process? I mean, that's the process I'd like to look at. Is that actually demonstrating the kids that belong at a TJ? And is that diverse, getting a diverse set of kids who belong at a TJ or want to be at a TJ for a variety of reasons? That's the piece I don't, I don't hear a lot about, the, the process of getting into the.
Right, so I would put it to you this way. You're talking about changing pool one. What we're changing here today is pool two. And then pool two, we're taking out the test and letting pool one stand on its own merit, its own talent. A separate question that you're bringing up now is, and we talked about it with that targeted outreach, does the actual removal of the test now change the dynamic about people who've not applied, who will now be willing to apply? Either by region, by ethnicity, by economics, by special education? And that's the part that really the outreach will tell us. Will changing the way that we've set up TJ to enter actually change the kind of kid who's willing to apply? And I bet, my own belief is that applications will soar to TJ because more kids will feel like they actually have a shot to get in, who do have the qualifications that we've outlined in that, in those application pool requirements.
We, at the end, I guess, I am just concerned to make sure that, that the purpose of TJ is to provide a gifted education for those interested in STEM and those are able to access it and want to access it. And I don't know how this change fulfills that purpose is where I'm confused. You know, I always think there's, there's 10 or 20%, 10% of kids who absolutely have to have a TJ level and others who are very qualified for it, but don't absolutely have to have it. How do we make sure we address both groups? I don't know how else to phrase it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Rochna, I don't have all the answers for that, but I'll say this. We've made a, we've made a mistake in my belief that the highest score on the test means you have the most passion.
Yeah, and that's not the truth. I don't agree with that either.
Right, I, I don't. And, and I'll tell you this too. In this era of a global pandemic, I want our top scientists and medical leaders, of which TJ will be training. The pandemic is not about scoring highest on a standardized test. We need to be developing and as, as Ann said, spotting talent, developing it. TJ's got to be more about passing a standardized test. And I think we made that disproportionately, you know, as Tammy talked about, the, the weighting. We've overweighted that. It's time to take that weight off the backs of kids. And we can work on it and develop new weights or, you know, new.
That's what I want to find, that's my concern, right? Absolutely, I understand the issues with the test and I don't agree with it. But how do we make sure that what we're putting in place is supporting what we want people to do? And that's where I don't see that data here.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead, Dr. Ray.
Yeah, just to make a final point, that questionnaire, as Jeremy said, we're going to keep the panels, they're going to go through that questionnaire. They're going to work to tease out passion, hope, dreams. And, and my own belief, the, one of the next bold steps is we need to have TJ experience at every high school and Fairfax County Public Schools. Instead of creating this idea that only one place can be a place where dreams can come true for a kid passionate in technology, math, science. We have that in every school. We have high-level courses in every high school, some better than others at creating that pipeline. And that's what we need to recommit to doing better moving forward. And we'll talk about that next month.
Can I have a go back, please, Ms. Cohen?
You certainly may. I think, sounds like everybody wants another round. Next, we have Ms. Omeish, followed by Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. A couple of clarifying questions. So just the, to clarify, the percent offered chart accounts for the 3.5 GPA adjustment, right? So it's only for the pool that would have had a 3.5?
Jeremy, I'm not sure. Jeremy?
Yeah, are you referring to the modeling?
Yeah.
That's correct. We, we accounted for it at the 3.5. And, and if you'll recall, the numbers were different in terms of the applicant pool at the time in terms of students to get in. So if you're comparing those two, they did have different GPA requirements.
Okay, thank you. And then for the core classes GPAs, it's still, so it's only seventh grade and then the beginning of eighth, right, for the 3.5?
So the, so the core, so for core classes, you're looking at the end of the year, seventh grade marks for math, science, your history and English, along with any student that had a world language for high school credit. And then it was first quarter of eighth grade as well.
Okay, when you say end of the year, so that's, yeah, yeah, so the whole, the year. Yeah, 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 okay. Because I remember, you know, one of the things we were thinking is a more expansive look. I don't know if that's considered, but I appreciate the clarification. Have we considered the merits of teacher recommendation? Whether that's a referral or kind of just a check off the box kind of thing? Have there, has there been thinking around pros and cons of something like that?
Jeremy, as I recall, as I shared, we've actually, Abra, we've removed teacher recommendations from the pool. And one of the things that we heard from our AAP study was that those recommendations can be subject to bias. So we, we've actually removed that. And Jeremy, is there anything else to say there?
No, Dr. Bray Ban, that was, that was the discussion because teacher recommendations were a topic of conversation about a piece that, moving forward. But looking at the, the other results from the other study was where we kind of fell with why we would remove them from this process as well.
Yeah, no, I, I noticed that in the presentation. I, I'm thinking not so much is the write-up, you know, that is, is, as you pointed out, very subjective or has that potential, but kind of just an approval to enter a pool or something like that. I'm not saying that's a good idea. I'm, I'm, you know, wondering if that was thought about, but that's fine. I also wanted to, another clarifying question. So from the, the, the presentation, my understanding of the rolling process was that students would be opted in automatically and they can opt out. But through the discussion, I wasn't so sure. So could someone please clarify that everyone will be considered that meets those criteria?
Jeremy?
Yeah, sure. So just to, to clarify, you would still have an applicant pool. So you would have, so a student would still apply as long as, and they meet the minimum requirements, the three-five, they're in Algebra I, they have to submit or complete the, the questionnaire essays. At that, those students, any of those students that apply, as long as they meet that, they would be put into the lottery pool. Now, if a student doesn't apply, the, even if they met the minimum criteria, that's not a student that we would consider. But that goes back to what Dr. Bray Ban was talking about previously. That goes back to our outreach. That goes back to that targeted approach where we're looking to try to encourage those students to consider TJ as a high school opportunity for them. And so that's the, I think that's the distinction. So you would still have an applicant pool, which would not be consistent of everyone that's in Fairfax County Public Schools that meets that requirement.
Yeah, I mean, this is one of those areas where I think, I, I worry about this. I think there's an alternative that might be more conducive to diversity, right? I know this has been one of the, similar to how in AAP, we test everyone. If we're already having outreach problems and we decide that this is a model we're going to move forward with, which is its own topic of conversation. But I would, my advocacy would be to ask, you know, is there anything preventing us from being able to have it be an opt-out rather than opt-in?
Dr. Bray Ban, do you want to handle that one?
Part of it, part, look, anything, anything is up for discussion, but what we have wanted is kids that have an interest. There are a lot of kids with three-fives that don't have an interest in science and technology. That's just not what they want to do. And, you know, just personally, well, maybe personal experience. I mean, I, I had a three-five or higher in high school, but I really didn't love science and math as my passion. And I wasn't interested. Our, our local school system created while I was in high school, a technology academy, and it just didn't, it didn't excite me. So we don't want to, we don't want to drag kids into something they don't want to be a part of. So that's really why we were refraining. The pool of, of kids with three-fives and higher is still going to be larger than the applicant pool. But we want kids with those three-fives and with the interest in having the TJ experience around science, technology, engineering and math.
Yeah, maybe, maybe the, the problem I'm trying to get at doesn't even necessarily need to be solved that way. Maybe it's the idea of informing everyone, hey, you're eligible. You know, you're able to apply to this thing, which can, can mitigate some of the outreach problem. Because I, I just am worried about, you know, kids have to find out about TJ and then their parents, you know, their parents have to know. And then they have to go find how to opt-in. And you, you have some of the same outreach issues we're having right now, which are clearly significant. So I would suggest that for consideration. I would also, I want to go back to what Dr. Anderson mentioned earlier about school-based numbers. I would, this is another point of advocacy on my part as we move forward with this, that we have, you know, the, the proportions are based on schools rather than regions. After the equity issues you outlined. So I would love if someone could explain whether that's, whether there's anything preventing that. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, would you like a go back also?
Yeah, please, thanks.
We could certainly have that conversation. Jeremy or Marty, do you want to talk at all about region versus school?
I, I don't know if Marty's still on here or not. But so region versus school, there was conversations, there was looks at the, both, both ways. And a lot of this had to do with looking at the overall approach of what we were trying to do when we're a school, when we're a school that actually supports multiple school divisions. And so we wanted to stay consistent throughout the entire approach, which would have looked at a couple of other school divisions as well. So if you take some of the larger participating school divisions, such as Loudon or Prince William, and apply that same school-level approach to them, we don't want to look at that. We didn't want to go to that level with them as well. In addition, it was also, there was some questions, I think, someone had mentioned earlier about just an overall lottery approach just for Fairfax County. And what we, what we also recognized was that there's a geographic element here that we've been lacking historically. And we wanted to assure that there were students that were coming from the different areas. And remember, we're talking about the base schools. We're looking at this from a base school approach. What is the school in which the student would, would naturally be attending? And ensure that there is some, there is regional representation to give us that geographic distribution within Fairfax County that has lacked in, in, in previous years. And so that was the part of the reason was, it was a step in that direction to ensure that we had regional or geographic representation across Fairfax County at TJ through this approach. And, and that was the reason why we went with a regional approach as opposed to boiling it down to an individual school approach. And it, and it just, it was a, it was a, it was, allowed us to provide kind of a, an intermediate step there from going from an, an entire county approach to an individual school approach.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Frisch.
Thank you. Let me just say, this is not a pipeline issue and it's not a testing issue. It's both and it's way more than. It's both, and it's way more than that. It's a problem with the message that we send our kids, the students, our underrepresented students, and the culture that we allow in the system. I've received, I can't even count the number of emails that I've received from parents telling me that the real reason we have an underrepresentation is because Black and Brown families don't care, or they are culturally disinclined from pursuing STEM. That's the sort of bigotry pointed at members of our own community is why we are here in the year 2020 asking for data about access to AAP and STEM and other opportunities. And for generations, why they haven't had access to these opportunities. And why they've been denied the same dreams that everybody else has. At some point, some school board is going to have to stand up and say enough is enough. You know, if a growing number of elite universities can acknowledge that a test is not a suitable measurement of merit, then Fairfax County Public Schools can do the same thing. That's not to say that I don't have some concerns. I do have concerns about the regional approach here, similar to Dr. Anderson's. You know, I wonder, I worry whether we will further disadvantage some middle schools that are already underrepresented. I'm also concerned that some families may move to a different region to, you know, in hopes that they'll have an easier shot at gaining admission, although I don't know how you would mitigate something like that. And, you know, I also, you know, to Abra's point, how are we connecting with the qualified students? I think in the implementation of any plan going forward, we need a concrete plan for how we are going to directly engage the families of qualified students, because I don't think we're doing enough. Finally, I also want to bring up, you know, these slides that we've been presented with, which show remarkable growth if we implement a merit lottery. Still only show a tiny percentage of what the actual school population is. So this conversation is not over when we make this movement. Or else some future school board will be sitting in a future school board meeting with a list of all the things that other school boards have done in the past to make it better and only saw the needle, the needle move only so much. So I'm heartened that we're having this conversation now. It's long overdue, and we cannot delay having this conversation and moving forward. We need certainly to answer some questions, and we can do that with our next steps. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. Did you want any response from Dr. Braybrand and crew?
Sure. I mean, I'd love to hear a commitment to a more robust plan for outreach to families of qualified students. It's one of the things that we raised in our meeting manager's meeting.
Yeah, Mr. Smith, did you want to share something on that?
Oh, no, I was going to simply say that Mr. Frisch is right on target. And as we talked about, ensuring that we have a more robust process for reaching out to families, reaching out to students who are eligible to apply, working with our counselors, working with our teachers and administrators, so that we can help them have those conversations, continue to have those conversations with families. But helping those families who didn't ever see TJ as an opportunity, we want them to see TJ as an opportunity, and we want them to be part of that application process.
Thank you.
Talking about families moving to different regions to try and game the system, or I'm assuming that you all thought of that when coming up with this plan. Did you throw out any ideas to mitigate the issue, or is it just something that can't be addressed?
Those are things that I think we have little ability to control. We know that there are ways that people will try to find advantage with any aspect of our admissions process. And so, you know, I think it's really more about how we can be proactive in working with our administrators, working with our counselors and teachers, and working directly with those students and families to help them understand that TJ is an option. The more students we have in the application pool, the more we begin to see that the talent in Fairfax County is reflected at TJ.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. You know, I would just like to point out that we have 30% of our kids are economically disadvantaged. Almost 30% of our kids don't speak English as their first language. And when we look at that, they roughly make up about 1% of the kids who even make the cutoff ultimately for TJ. And to me, the message becomes if you're poor, if English is not your native language, if you're Black, if you're Latino, this is not the school for you. And we cannot have spent the last few hours talking about bias and hate in our curriculum without recognizing that there are also structures in our system that perpetuate the same kinds of issues that we are talking about working to fix in the rest of our system. COVID gives us an opportunity to try something new. It gives us an opportunity to not ask kids to come back into buildings and then only have kids willing to take a test whose parents are willing to have them take that risk or who don't have pre-existing conditions. What we're saying is we have an opportunity to do something different this year. And this is not likely to be forever. Look, we're all quite open that in nine years, six times, we've tried something different and hasn't worked. So I don't know that there is a forever, but we know we have an application process that's a problem, and we know we have an attendance issue that is a problem. Is it chicken or egg? I don't know the answer to that. But I know that our kids often don't see themselves as belonging. And to be honest, many have reached out to tell me that once they get there, they certainly don't feel like they belong. So this is a systemic problem that can only have a holistic fix. So that means budget priorities that talk about pipelines at schools. It means ARTs. It means looking at the whole problem, and it also means the kind of support the kids need when they get there, and that will take investment. It will take change to even start that to happen. So I worry, I worry about some of the things. I worry, I want us to make sure that we have kids who really are able to handle the kind of rigor in math. I think we need to have conversations about how we make sure that every middle school and elementary school in our county is getting them that opportunity. And one is not going to fix the other. It has to be together. You know, I also want, when we talk about panels and with the new student information sheet, we have to make sure those panels are trained in cultural competency and that we're not hitting some of the same pitfalls that we have in any other process. So I know we have several, I don't expect an answer to that unless you'd like to comment on it. I'm going to take that as a no. I guess the one question I do have is, Dr. Braybrand, can we expect that we're going to see budget priorities to help fix the pipeline at the same time?
Well, Ms. Cohen, thank you. And of course, you know, a budget remains a topic of extraordinary interest and fluidity right now with COVID-19. I do think as we're doing the budget for this coming year, we've got to prioritize equity at the center of our budget deliberations. And so I think anything around supporting this pipeline and supporting the TJ admissions has to get risen to the top. So I certainly want it to be, and we may need to look at reallocating as we do the program budget review with you all here, things that we've put investments in in the past, and reallocate those to investments we want to make for the future, including for TJ and the pipeline.
Thank you. Colleagues, I am wondering, we've been going, I know, nonstop, and so has staff. Almost every member has a go back. I wondered if everybody liked a two-minute break to run and grab water, use the restroom, whatever, and let's 6:20 get to go backs. And I'd like those to be limited to 90 seconds, please. Yes, Dr. Braybrand?
Is five minutes possible just for some of our staff members to walk and join to the?
So we don't all get blood pots. Yes, 6:23, we'll see everybody back here.
Thank you.
All right, friends, we're in the home stretch, I hope. I will do a quick, just check to make sure we got everybody back, but we'll do a minute and a half, but I would absolutely love it if you feel like you do not need to use all of your time. It'd be great if we could stick to a minute. I know I'm trying to be respectful of all of our times and supper time coming up quick. So real quick, check in with everybody back from break. Dr. Anderson?
Present.
Ms. Corbett Sanders?
I'm here. Just not quick, unmute.
Ms. Tolan? We'll come back to Ms. Tolan, Ms. Sizemore Heiser?
I'm here.
Ms. Omeish?
Here.
Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Here.
Mr. Frisch?
Here.
Ms. McLaughlin?
Here.
Ms. Marin?
Very much still here.
Ms. Bukarski?
I'm here.
Ms. Darren at COFAX?
Here.
And then let's try Ms. Tolan one time, and we'll go ahead and get started.
I'm here.
Thank you all so much, and thanks for being so prompt. All right, so with go backs, I've written down the order that I had. If anybody has objection to me missing somebody out of turn, please let me know. But I have Dr. Anderson starting with our first go back in a minute and a half, please.
Okay, thank you. I will be short and sweet. I am in favor of this approach because while we know it's not the only thing we have to do, we have a pipeline issue, we have an admissions issue, we have a culture issue. It does not stand to reason to me for us to not do anything at all at this point. So starting here, it's as good as any, but it definitely is insufficient. We have to do more. So I am very much in favor of us moving forward. And yes, the timeline may be, may seem aggressive, but it's overdue. This is urgent. We have, we've been behind this ball for a very, very long time. The only thing that I want to be sure that I clarify, I do not want for this regional approach to eclipse some of my schools. It is heartbreaking that TJ sits in Mason District and Mason District students don't see that as an opportunity. So I'm going to stop there because I think much has been said to help support why this is not something we need to not engage in immediately, if not sooner. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Next, I have, Ms. McLaughlin was actually in the queue second.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I am. I sure can.
Okay, so the quickest points I can make are, number one, Dr. Braybrand, universities that do selective admissions without tests, they do look at the rigor of the curriculum students have taken to ensure they're prepared properly. So you need to come back with us about what that 3.5 is. Are you going to also put in there the course review? Because a 3.5 across standard level courses is not going to necessarily set students up for success. And once they get to TJ, it will be so rigorous. They are going to be with students who are at the AAP centers who've taken all honors courses at the middle school level. So I think you need to add more meat on the bones to your approach that's not test. If you're taking the test portion out, you've got to bring more of that to the table. And I would like to know what these other schools have done in that regard to the rigor of the courses that have been taken. The second thing is that I still, I'm probably most comforted by what Ms. Cohen said, that in this COVID year, we can certainly try to see what happens when we get rid of the test. But I, I will caution that rushing to this without making sure that we've got a process that allows students to be successful has me concerned. And secondly, the regional slots, 70 per, based when the regions weren't set up that way. Rochelle Sizemore Heiser said what I think. You need to look at maybe doing a county-wide lottery for this year then. I have grave concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. Ms. Keys-Gamara?
Can you guys hear me now? I'm sorry. Okay. I, I am going to have to support this. And I know that it's not perfect. But I don't think in the year of COVID that we can just do what we've been doing. I don't even think it's practical. So the other thing is, I want to hear a report on what our outreach will be. Because I don't want our efforts to be counterproductive. I also want to hear more I also want to hear more about the specifics because we did not have an opportunity to review these documents. We were all in meetings when they were finally released. The board does need to participate in the process and as much public engagement as we can possibly squeeze in. Let's face it, the board is going to be held accountable regarding this decision. I also would say that once we identify students that are accepted, we may want to offer some online support for them during the summer. Because we do have that concern about what is available at some schools and not others. And that may be something that we can pull together in the virtual, some type of virtual support. But my final thing would be to please, please, let's have this additional conversation. Let's, you know, we need to look at the full spectrum of information that is available.
Thank you, Ms. Keys-Gamara. Next on my list, I have Ms. Tolan.
All right, let's get him before me. Okay, I'm just going to give a litany of questions in 90 seconds. We've got so many advanced, we're sports and have so many advanced and passionate students in Fairfax County across the board. And we, you know, how do we treat all of them with respect that they deserve? I understand we need to make a change. I understand that pandemic will make the testing difficult. But how do we make sure that the students that really need to be experienced get there? You know, there's some percentage of students in that high school that just really need to be there. I would happy to hear more about the revised student information sheet and what that can tell us. But I'm wondering why the problem solving essay was removed? And I think that might give us more information about these students. Have we considered the capacity and programmatic issues that we will have at our base high schools? You know, when we look at this regional perspective and, you know, things are shifting around. We're going to need to offer additional science courses at our base high schools. You know, these students are not going to be getting into TJ. What are we going to do for students that are not getting in? Big picture, we've got all these amazing students. Why don't we get busy and buckle down and start another program? Why are we turning talent away from programs like that? Let's build on our Edison Global Engineering Program. Government policy.
Thank you, Ms. Tolan. Anyone like to respond? Ms. Tolan did ask specifically about removal of that, that essay piece. Mr. Smith, did you want to speak to that?
Oh, well, I wasn't going to speak to the essay piece and I have to apologize. I had to leave for another meeting and now I'm back. And so if this was discussed, I apologize, but I know that there was some discussion about what do we do for those students who need a particular type of educational experience? And I know that we could, you know, possibly use our virtual learning experience to provide opportunities for students to either take coursework or take additional classes at TJ. When I was in school, we call it auditing. Of course, it wouldn't be auditing, you would actually be part of the class. But those are things that we could certainly take a look at. I know that with regard to the problem solving essay, it's actually, Mr. Sugar and I worked very closely with our colleagues from all of our receiving schools. And Ms. Corbett Sanders was actually the president of APAC at the time. We've had conversations with folks about that particular essay and how we might change that. We could certainly take a look at some type of problem solving piece as part of the student information sheet to add a bit more variance to that. So those are things that we could certainly take a look at.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And I apologize, but I inadvertently skipped to Ms. Corbett Sanders, so you are on deck.
Thank you. I understand. So as the school board representative of a region of the county that has been historically underrepresented, to the point that kids don't even bother applying anymore. Many of them don't. I absolutely think that we have to do something new. And we have to do something that ensures that we have a holistic merit based approach that creates opportunities and access for every child who needs to take advantage of a school like TJ and is not an environment in which we are actually disincenting kids before, so that, so much so that they don't even bother applying. So I like what we've talked about today. I do think that I feel much more comfortable with many of the suggestions in our conversation about the importance of, of that separate sheet, the student sheet. I do think that we need to have clarity on that statement from students and an example of problem solving capabilities that is not test prep oriented. I do think that we need to look at our panel discussions. And so from my perspective, what I would like to see is that when the superintendent comes back to us on October 8th, he provides clarity as to how he's going to incorporate all of these pieces in the approach to be taken this year. Because they've all been supported by what Jeremy has said throughout this conversation.
We will pull that together.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Next on my list, I have Ms. Marin. And I'm not 100% sure if she wanted to go back or not, so.
Actually, I did not want to go back. I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have Ms. Sizemore Heiser.
Great, thank you. Thank you. First, I wanted to say I very much do support getting rid of the testing piece of the step from the pool to the, is on my finalist because I, for all the reasons we mentioned earlier. But I do think there's a huge pipeline issue. I wish we'd had more information here on what to address with that. You know, I think Mr. Frisch brought up the, the emails from students who see they don't see them. There's a cultural bias against those who kind of get encouraged to go to TJ as well as those who are at TJ. And I personally think that sounds like from all the emails I've gotten, a huge part of the problem. And I would like to see more on how do we address that supportive culture at TJ? As well as the outreach, high level math, cultural bias, all those pieces in building the pipeline to students at TJ. The second piece is have we looked at a two pronged approach to some of this? I think Mr. Smith mentioned conversations around those students who really need to be at a TJ versus those students who are very capable of TJ, want that extra STEM enrichment and want to be at TJ. But there are some in the Council for Exceptional Children even talk about the behavioral concerns. And I think Ann brought it up as well, of students who need that enrichment, don't get it. And have we looked at ways to ensure that we include that group to get it? And then I really, on Dr. Braybrand's point about intentionally including high level classes at base schools. I will tell you, as a parent, I personally saw that. I really think we need to look at STEM education across and also other magnet programs. So TJ isn't the thing that people will go to because of people. So those are my follow ups.
Thank you. Did anybody want to comment on that? The idea Ms. Sizemore Heiser was suggesting, a two pronged approach?
The two pronged approach, you were talking about the, the increasing the pipeline and the access of these courses at the base schools. Do you want to know whether we can bring an update around that at the next meeting? Is that your point?
May I clarify, Ms. Cohen?
Yes, you may.
So, Dr. Braybrand, the two pronged approach is, you know, we're looking at a lottery system, but there's, there's, you know, again, the research shows some kids who really operate at this level that they need a magnet program or enrichment like TJ. And many, many other kids, including the ones we're missing, are diverse students who would benefit from a TJ and want to be at a TJ versus those who need to be at a TJ. Mr. Smith even mentioned those conversations. I'm just wondering if there's a two pronged approach? So we get the kids who, the small, small percentage, I believe, who need to be there and have a pathway that ensures a better diversity of students who do want to and should be at TJ and are able to be at a TJ.
You know, I'd have to, I'd have to go back to the team and think that through. I don't know whether that's something, I, I'd have to go back and think that through with the team, to be honest. It's certainly an interesting suggestion, but I don't have the answer at this time.
Is that a possible next? Sorry, Mr. Smith.
Oh, and I did just want to clarify when I was talking about those students who need to be there. I'm also talking about those students who have historically been underrepresented who need to be there as well. So I wanted to clarify that piece. And I think, and I think that there are opportunities for us, just as there are students who currently apply for TJ and aren't accepted at TJ. We certainly do differentiate for those students at their base schools. And so we would want to ensure that we continue that type of differentiation at their base schools, working very closely with their families to independently program for those students. So I think that there are opportunities. And that goes to some of the opportunities I shared before about, you know, even the, the ability to use virtual learning to actually access classes or courses at TJ. So we'll certainly be working with our principals and our counselors to, to make sure that we meet the needs of all of our students. And for those students who need enrichment across the board or need individualized enrichment, we can provide those supports for them.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sizemore Heiser. Next, we have Ms. Darren at COFAX. Did you want to go back?
Yes, ma'am. So one of, oh, there we go. One of my colleagues, I can't remember who talked about there'll be boards in the future that have, will be talking about this if we don't do something. Well, I do want to mention that we have done something six different times as I stated. But what we haven't done is we haven't addressed the root of the problem. We have not committed funds and, and we are collectively culpable. The state of Virginia hasn't done universal pre-K. We have not been funded properly. We have not been able to do our front loading, young scholars or advanced academic resources. I was quoted in the Washingtonian magazine twice over the last 10 years because we have been fighting for this equity issue with no good results. So again, as colleagues have expressed, I will support this. But Dr. Braybrand, a couple of things. You said TJ does not represent all the talent we have here in Fairfax. And I think this statement begs the question for other high performing magnet schools here. And in order to do that, we must have funding, we must have support from state and local officials. And finally, we have to be committed to all of these things we have been fighting for, for over 10 years. And we have to commit budget dollar to that and we have to be serious about it. Because there will be, this, this, this is one of the Washingtonian magazines. I do want to say this, this should not be the cover of Washingtonian magazine. Why you should hate this school. And it's about Thomas Jefferson High School. And some people, it is a school where people need to feel embraced, cared after. And it is a school that started out with all the right purposes, but we have not been able to figure out how to get things back on track. While I'm going to say one word, I'm sorry, I am not 100% this is the right option. I'm going to vote for it, but those other things have to be fixed. Thank you for letting me go over.
Thank you, Ms. Darren at COFAX. Next up, we have Ms. Bukarski.
Thank you. I'm not really sure I could follow that because it encapsulates exactly how I'm feeling. It's not lack of urgency. It's actually investing in the ways that will fix the core of the problem. And that, I mean, we have to, we have to now. What I worry with this lottery system, what we don't want to do is leave it up to chance that those kids who are truly highly exceptional will not get in because that will be a travesty. And I know there are kids that are not getting in. But I, I just, I am trying to figure out how that will solve this. I am trying very hard. I have an open mind. I want to engage my constituents. I want to engage our stakeholders. I want to talk about this again. I still think there is so much left to say. You know, I agree with what Ms. Corbett Sanders said about the critical thinking piece of this. It just, it really worries me when I think that a student like me could have met that GPA very easily in high school. And I did not belong in TJ. That was not where I was supposed to be. So I just want to make sure that we aren't capturing all of those kids.
Thanks.
And I, I would add that as we talk about our outreach efforts, it's really some things that, that we talk about quite a bit. It's about building those relationships with students and understanding what our students' desires are. And so it is very important that we identify students who want to apply, who have a strong love and a strong desire for science, technology, engineering, STEM and STEAM. And so we certainly would want to make sure that we get those students who would see TJ as an option for them. I'm with you, Ms. Bukarski. I would have made those requirements, but I don't know if I would have necessarily been a student who would have thrived at TJ. So we want to make sure that we're identifying students who have the requisite criteria in that and who also have that love and have that spark for the opportunities that we can provide at TJ.
Thank you. Ms. Omish, do you want to go back?
Yes, thank you. Okay, so I have a couple of questions first. The, to address Ms. McLaughlin's concern, is the 3.5 weighted or unweighted that we're considering?
This is Mr. Sugar. That was an unweighted GPA.
Okay, she raises a worthwhile point, so I think that's something to think about. The second question, is the only way to enter the pool GPA, from what I'm understanding now, is yes. And was there consideration given maybe to additional paths towards it to Ms. Bukarski's point about talent and recruiting talent?
Mr. Sugar, or Mr. Smith?
Oh, I'm sorry. I think we're talking about the application pool or the lottery pool. I need some clarification because the application pool, the application pool is a 3.5. The lottery pool is all that information plus the essay and/or student information sheet process. And so whatever that looks like and how we create the questions that students would answer so that we could get at that desire for STEM, the opportunities that they've had, the experiences that they've had. The, that's the piece that would take them into the lottery pool.
Right, so in that initial vetting, if, if a student has a 3.4 and all their teachers are recommending they get in, right? That's not a path, there's no path for that student, right? I'm wondering if alternatives were considered on this? I just want to gain a better understanding of the, of the thinking there.
So there, there was conversations, but in terms of what you're talking about as a student that has a 3.4, that student wouldn't have been eligible for this year. They certainly would have been eligible to be able to apply in the future. The, the comparison would have been to students currently that would have a 2.9, would not be eligible to apply this year or in previous years when a 3.0 was the minimum requirements. So it's about setting that baseline and removing the tests and looking at some merits in terms of this. There was great discussion about where, where that gets put. And ultimately where we settled on that to move forward was at the 3.5 as opposed to a, a 3.0 or a 3.25 or even on the other end, a 3.75 or perhaps even a 4.0. It was trying to make sure that we found a, you know, a place there that we were comfortable with moving forward.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think it would be worthwhile to think about additional paths that don't involve the testing component, which I think is what we were removing for the bias piece. But just something to think about. And then I'm curious. And then I'm curious, what's the planned priority for the TJ office now that the process will be different? Will that be recruitment, advertising, that kind of thing?
So in terms of the focus, it shifts the timing of what we do. So if we move forward with this and the application begins in a winter timeframe, say a December, January timeframe, instead of having students applying in September, we shift that to a winter time, which allows for more recruitment. So it goes back to some of the previous questions that people were talking about, is that outreach? We, and I think there's, there perhaps is a misunderstanding to the amount of outreach that we currently do. Our office is a very small office. We're two and a half staff members in our office that does the outreach that we currently conduct. And what we do during the current application window or previous years, I should say, use those as the example, is we were out and presenting a lot of different information, having many different evening and daytime presentations to students and families. And what this would provide us, you know, in a year in which we're not developing it as we're moving forward, would allow for very targeted approaches. I think someone mentioned young scholars as a, as a, as a group that has that conversations. That actually is one of the targeted groups that we currently are engaged with and perform and provide information to and try to encourage to go through this process. And what I would envision moving forward is that that information and that outreach not only is reaching all of those students. So we're inviting students to apply to TJ that meet these criterias in terms of grades and and math classes and whatever here in Fairfax County. But we can also share that with our participating jurisdictions and be able to get that information into their hands as well. But we can then add to that. So a lot of the conversation that we've heard today is that targeted approach and that thoughtful approach. And I think those are the pieces that we really want to be able to drive home so that it provides us with the time. Traditionally, having an early September or early fall application window provides us with a very limited amount of time to get those students when they're in eighth grade. So our approaches are trying to get students in younger grades before they even reach eighth grade. And so this would allow us to have more time specifically with those students in eighth grade to get encouragement and to try to drive up those applicants. And like Dr. Braybrand said earlier, I truly believe in a movement in this approach will encourage and increase the number of applicants in our process. I really believe that that's what will happen because that's what, you know, is our, is our, it's a drive for us to actually encourage students to go forward. So sorry if that was a little, you know, long-winded, but but that's kind of what the approach is, you know, moving forward.
Thank you. There's more to say, but my time. Big. Thank you, Ms. Omesh. Just a couple of questions that I had left. Was there anyone else who I missed with a go back? I'm sorry, before I speak. Seeing no hands, I just had a couple of quick questions. One, I just wanted to flag that I, for the community, that we are just, the proposal is to increase the number of students. So Mr. Sugar, will you speak to how many students we wound up having enrolled this year versus how many we would accept next year under this plan?
So the difference in terms of enrolling and what we do. So current process is, is we're offering students approximately between 480 and 500 students. So this year, we offer 486 students to attend TJ. That also, that does not include our wait pool students when we re-added back in over the summer and what ultimately register and walk in the door. So we know that who tells us that we're going to show up just last week for the first time and who actually walks through the door on a normal or who engages with us in a virtual environment is different. So I don't have the exact numbers of who actually started into school last week. But what I can tell you is having a rolling admissions approach and having this targeted at 500 and maybe able to talk about the actual number of students that are enrolled. But the idea of having a 500 approach and that rolling admissions through the end of first quarter is to ensure that we have 500 students for the freshman class moving forward. And we'll be able to add those students in as we go through and we find out there are seats that are open based upon where those students are coming from, which region, county, so on and so forth. That's the goal is to try to not have an arbitrary number that's below the number that we've always targeted but have never been able to quite achieve just based upon, you know, a variety of circumstances. Dr. Bonatavas, maybe you can answer and address the current students that are through the registration.
Sure, thank you. Our building capacity for the number of students based on our square footage after the renovation is a little bit over 1,900 students. Right now, we're sitting at 1,809 students. Of those that had been offered, the admissions, so Mr. Sugar said 486 may have been offered. We had 453 freshmen walk in our doors, virtual doors this fall. The previous year, we had 467. So that varies from year to year. And my proposal would be that just to boost the numbers at TJ so that way we're closer to that capacity of the 1,900 as opposed to 1,800 is that we would be able to admit a freshman class of 500 students and be able to reach out to what we call Frochmoors and and open up admissions to many more Frochmoors because we have that opportunity to do that when students are transitioning from ninth to 10th grade. And so I think outreach to that particular level would be critical.
Thank you. An additional question I had for, I guess, Dr. Smith, Mr. Smith or Mr. Sugar is was there consideration given to the idea of pyramid instead of region? I do really have some concerns about the regional approach.
I'll go ahead and attempt to address that. I know there was a lot of conversations around, and there's been a lot of questions around the approaches of regions versus individual schools or the county level. Honestly, I don't recall if there was conversations specific to a pyramid approach from a high school, from an individual high school standpoint. We had considered a lot of different options and we'd have to take that back to the team and kind of talk about that and look at that from a pyramid perspective and what that dynamic would change in what we're, what we proposed this evening or this afternoon.
And then really, one of my last questions is I just really encourage, if we're able to extend this timeline, of doing the work to figuring out why kids are not applying. I just think we cannot stress enough the need for the whole team to really do a deep dive in how we make sure that we are increasing the applicant pool, not just what happens after they apply. And again, just encourage outreach to students, not just to their schools, so that their individual FCPS emails, they're finding out the eligibility requirements and how they get there. Because that is definitely a barrier that I think just reaching out to parents, just reaching out to schools. We have a lot of kids who are going to have to be their own advocates for why TJ is their passion and their path. And if they're not getting that information directly from FCPS, I think we're missing a really key step of empowering our students to be advocates for themselves and what they want. I do see two additional hands. Were these, I know Ms. Miren did not use her go back. So Ms. Miren, did you have, did you want to use your go back?
Yeah, I actually just, yes, thank you. Yeah, actually, I don't know that Ms. Cohen's question was answered about why the region approach versus a pyramid approach. And I know, Ms. Sugar, you said, you know, you couldn't recall. But I think for the go back, coming back to us is I would really like a statement and analysis of, you know, could we do some kind of model that shows what the outcome could look like if it was by region? Or even if, why did you not choose by pyramid or what could that look like? So I wanted to mention that. Thank you.
So we could certainly look at the numbers. I know that there were concerns earlier and questions from board members about underrepresentation in certain, in certain areas. When we look at the statistics of what could possibly happen, you would see that our numbers of students getting into the application pool or, I'm sorry, to the lottery pool is really driven by those who apply, which would then mean it is incumbent upon us to ensure that we are not only getting those students who would regularly and normally apply to TJ, but also encourage many more students to apply to TJ. And when you use the lottery, it doesn't necessarily favor any one school over another. But it does ensure that certain underrepresented parts of the county would would have greater representation at the school. So when you look at a countywide draw versus a region-wide draw, you would still get the same distribution of students, but you wouldn't necessarily have any way to ensure that we were getting students from particular parts of the county. So the region approach would would help us with that. But we could certainly take a look at what those numbers would be by pyramid, which essentially in many pyramids is one middle school per pyramid.
Okay, I mean, this looks like the options are whole county, region, pyramid. And so why region? That's, you know, the ultimate question I think will be helpful to the board. Is this the right way to slice it?
We can take a look and bring something back by the, or on the.
Okay, thank you.
And then I see two colleagues who have a third round. I will ask, please, that you limit those to 45 seconds and we're at seven o'clock. And so I want to be mindful of people's work-life balance if there is such a thing. So Ms. McLaughlin, you go ahead first.
I just want a quick clarity from Jeremy on rolling admissions because at the college level, rolling admissions means you open up your first application date and then they're just, as you apply, you roll and admit. So what I thought I was hearing is you admit and then if the kids don't take the offer, then you're almost like having a more of a waitlist approach. So Jeremy, can you walk me through what this timeline looks like when you call it a rolling admissions? Because I want to make sure this doesn't confuse our families.
Sure, and Megan, Ms. McLaughlin, I think that's a good kind of point of clarification. What we were referring to as rolling admissions differently from the colleges of what you've described is that it is more like a rolling waitlist. What the intention was, is as Dr. Bonatavas shared, was numbers that were not meeting the freshman class that walked in the doors or at least virtually walked in the doors this fall was not what we had actually targeted or offered. We know that students are declining their offers for a variety of reasons. But the point being is that if those students are declining offers and we have seats available that we could provide to other students who have desire to go to TJ, we want to be able to provide as many of those options and opportunities as possible. And so through this process, our goal was to actually, instead of just having a wait pool that we offer a single time over the summer when we know that there are seats that are available at that point in time, which every summer we offer additional students above and beyond what we're offered in the, I'm sorry, in the winter round, in addition to the summer round, we then offer our wait pool. Well, in this process, what we're suggesting is, is that we would continue to offer to keep that freshman class that walks in the door at 500. And that's the, that's kind of that goal. And I think Dr. Bonatavas talked about the Frochmore. Our goal would be to, you know, to then repeat that process for that following year so that that way we can maintain a level that is greater than what we're currently seeing at TJ due to, you know, student choices, which they're, well, you know, they're, you know, we want them to have that choice. But we also know that if they're choosing not to, it's in our best interest to go ahead and offer that if we have the ability to another student.
Absolutely. I think that's an outstanding improvement. And I'm sorry we weren't doing it sooner, but glad it's going to happen going forward. Thanks, Jeremy.
Thanks, Ms. McLaughlin. All right, Abra, bring us home.
That's too much pressure. Okay, one thing, so I wanted to bring back the school-based thing. I know we're talking about pyramids in schools. Maybe a next step can be to examine the merits of which of those would be a better option. I say that because when you think about the outreach piece, which we know is one of the key issues, having it on a school basis might, you know, improve the belief of whether a student can get in. There's a, you know, they have people from their school who have gotten in. It can influence recruitment because we know we're working directly rather than this abstract number that's a little bit above that. So from a recruitment perspective and an outreach perspective, I think it could be helpful. But maybe that next step is to just examine the merits. Finally, I do plan to support this, of course. Perfect can't be the enemy of the good here. I really appreciate Mr. Fresh and Ms. Cohen's comments earlier in that direction. And finally, I don't want us to forget the voices that we're not hearing from, which are all those kids who didn't get in but are exceptional and talented. We want to make sure every kid in our system is successful.
Well done. See, you were up to the challenge, Ms. Omesh. I just want to thank everyone so much today. I know this has been an absolute marathon and we tackled some really tough longstanding systemic issues. And I know there's been a real commitment on this board and not just this year, I understand. But also to the staff of how do we make headway here? And I appreciate everybody bringing their best thinking and trying to figure out how we get to a place where, as Ms. Omesh said, we are seeing the talent and value and opportunity in every kid in the system. And so thank you so much to everybody. Thank you, staff. Thank you, colleagues. And I think we can put this one to bed, Dr. Braybrand, unless you feel like you'd like a sense of the board. Formerly, I think that you seem to get it through my colleagues' comments.
I think we're good. We are good. We heard your feedback. We'll take the next steps and we'll be glad to update you at our next meeting in October.
All right, and colleagues, I know we have some next steps that we need to tackle. Did everybody had an opportunity to take a look at the Google Doc?
No, I'm sorry. That's what I was asking where the next steps were. I'm sorry.
It's really okay. I'm sorry. I emailed everybody and texted to let everyone know that they were, they had been sent. And Ms. Mahida and Ms. Benkett were trying to, trying to help us.
Yeah, if they can post it, because the public needs to be able to see it, too. Typically, they post the document.
Anne, is that possible? Do you?
I'm sorry, that is not possible tonight. I apologize for that.
I can look and see, would you guys like me to read them again? Is that helpful?
Yes.
And then we can just, as a group, we can just agree that either there's something we feel like we need to quickly pull out or we can just agree with the consensus of the document. Is that acceptable?
Ms. Cohen, a point of privilege to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I would, I would say, how many, how many next steps are listed there before you?
14.
Yeah, I would suggest we've done what we've done in the past. That document you sent to the board and our homework is tonight to see if our next step is on there and then forward it to the superintendent who's giving a thumbs up right now for the chair and vice chair to work with him on that.
All right, I do think we actually have to read them. It sounds like, I know there's an ADA piece. And so I, I promise I will try to be a micro machine, but I'm
Ms. Cohen, point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
I've just emailed the next steps to everyone, so at least everybody can have it in front of them while you read through it really quickly.
Ms. Cohen, can I just share my screen with it rather than reading it? I'm happy to do that.
Sure, that would be wonderful.
So I guess we can.
Point of order, man.
It's all on the board at the end here, guys. Yes, Ms. Darren.
None of these are points of order.
Who needs, who needs to have it as a presenter to put their screen?
That was Ms. Sizemore Heiser, who was kind enough to say she would show her. Ms. Darren at COFAX, did you have something to add?
Yes, I had asked for the superintendent to come back with us, come back to us for looking at an additional magnet school and looking at, that's one. And then looking at a commitment to to deal with the three issues that have been plaguing us for years. The front-loading of curriculum in math and science, fidelity of implementation in the Young Scholars Program, and making certain that advanced academic resource teachers are in all elementary schools.
So that works. I will, I'm trying to type on my phone as we do this, so you guys can have to be patient with me, but unless Rocha can.
Yes, I can type it in, so I wasn't ready to do that. So if, Tammy, if you wouldn't mind, I'm happy to type that in. So I want to explore a magnet.
Explore additional magnet high schools. AAP magnet high schools. And then commit to a strategic plan. This is the second one, that's one issue. And then this next one is, commit to a strategic plan to address longstanding issues affecting diversity and equity in AAP programming. And these include front-loading of curriculum, math and science curriculum, implementing the Young Scholars Program with fidelity and uniformity across our schools, and ensuring that there are advanced academic resource teachers in all of our schools.
And I'm just going to ask, Dr. Brabran, if you deem appropriate, please feel free to send your staff home to eat supper. And if you don't mind hanging through with us, we'll knock this out quickly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Please let me know if there's anything different. Just take a look if you can see it.
All right, Ms. Tolan, your hand is up next.
Yep, I wanted to follow up on whether or not a problem-solving question would be part of the student information sheet. Already said we would look into that. And I wanted to follow up on Abrahar's question about utilizing a weighted GPA. And then Dr. Brabran mentioned he would have to, in the next day or two, I guess, his plan for talking with the community about the change of.
Community outreach plan, is that all right?
Communication and outreach plan.
Sorry, my computer's being slow. All right, Elaine, I have your three.
We have Ms. Corbett Sanders.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Tolan picked up on some of my original ask, which was the outreach plan. And by October 8th, a clearer definition of what that application process would be to include the expanded, the revised student sheet, a problem, a demonstration of problem-solving capability, and the addressing the question as to courses that are looking at, a more holistic look at the application to include courses taken by students in the math and sciences, so that the focus is a math and science area. And as I understand it, Mr. Smith committed that he could, he would be able to provide us that additional detail. And then the statement, I think it's number two or three associated with mine, which was the submission of the plan to Richmond should take place after our discussion on October 8th. So it should not, what I wanted to assure, because we have a deadline of October 8th now. And what the superintendent said is that he actually had until October 9th, so we wanted to make sure that that is clearly stated to allow for the public engagement and the answers to our questions. And then beyond just the TJ admissions, the superintendent was going to come back to us with clarity on how we're going to ensure that the availability of advanced math and sciences in elementary schools is not limited to just the AAP centers, but that we have a fidelity of implementation of those programs in all of our elementary schools, so that we have the opportunity and access.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, I just want to say, I think mine captures that as well, but it's okay that it's.
No, I meant the front-loading and fidelity implementation. I was just. Yours is with the AAP centers, and I just wanted to make sure it's beyond the AAP centers.
Yeah, well, maybe it's written that way. That wasn't my intent. I'll look at it again. I'll talk to.
All right, super fast, as fast as possible, Ms. Keith Zamarra, and then Ms. McLaughlin.
Okay, I asked for additional work sessions and a board committee to look at how we're going to address ongoing concerns regarding TJ, including a look at historical documents such as the MSALC reports, task force documents, and the Blue Ribbon Study. Are we ready for the next one?
Yeah. I got work session and board committee to address ongoing TJ concerns, including looking at historical documents.
Okay. Outline possible support for admitties this summer.
Outline possible support for admitties this summer.
Right, and then the last one is to look at the pros and cons of governor's schools versus academies to address equity and access to advanced learning opportunities, including the ability to serve the area in which the school resides. I'd be happy to read that again if you need me to.
Yeah, I've got, look at pros and cons of governor's schools versus academies to look, and I'm sorry, Karen, I lost the rest of it.
To look at, to address equity and access to advanced learning opportunities, including the ability to serve the area in which the school resides.
All right, Rocha, or Ms. Ismore Heiser, I'm sorry.
Yeah. You're welcome, Bea.
Sorry, there's a lot of mics on, so I don't know who's talking at the same time. Ms. Tolan has her hand up.
Yes, I just wanted to add one more thing. Can we please have?
Elaine, you're really scattered, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Sorry, can you hear me better? I'd like to look at capacity issues and programming issues at our base high schools that will be impacted.
Programming and capacity issues at base high schools that might be impacted by admissions process change.
Thank you.
Thank you, and then I just see Ms. Corbett Sanders with her hand up as hopefully our last next steps, or we'll.
Yes, I have.
Wait, Ms. Cohen, I've had my hand up the whole time.
I'm so sorry. Actually, you totally disappeared from my screen. I apologize. There we go.
Megan, I see yours written in the email. I can just type it in if you're okay with that. I see it written here. I can cut the base to the.
But like everybody else, I think it's important that they be read out loud for the public who's going to watch this now or later. So if Laura Jane wants to read them out loud, or I can read them out loud, and then Rocha, you're able to type them in, because I did send them.
Yeah, I'm just going to cut the page. If you want to read them, I can cut.
Sure.
McLaughlin, I'm happy for you to read them.
All right, I'll read them real quick. I would like staff to provide a summary crosswalk and analysis of the school's admissions processes that were cited in the appendix by the October 8th work session. I would like them to provide the numbers and the percentages of the applicants who are earning a 3.5 unweighted GPA versus a weighted 3.5 GPA for this prior 2019 admissions class. And I'd like them to provide the application numbers for each of the middle schools as were represented in the 2019 admissions class. If Dr. Brabran or staff have any questions for clarity, I'm happy to explain that.
Well, and I just wanted to interject that we did get the, we did get an email, I think, that provided each school's applicants and then admitted students for the last five years.
I guess, but Ms. Cohen, as I've asked for eight years with staff, having things in separate places versus having things in the document so that the public can find it all in the same place, and board members, when we reference back to it, we can. So I would like it all in one place.
Yeah, we'll have to go back again. It provides a FERPA issue of numbers that are too small, so they're identifiable.
I have no problem, I have no problem where they can't provide it. They just provide what they can. I mean, the point is, we're trying, we're trying to see what we're looking at here for.
So you'd like that document added back into the materials for today's meeting?
That, yes, for question three.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, and then, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Cohen, the question I had asked in my first round, but it wasn't provided, and I do want to make sure it's here. So Ms. Ismore Heiser, if you can type it in. I noted that we only had the percentage of, we had the racial demographics of the entering class, but we don't have the applicant demographics. And so we should have the comparable applicant demographics, so we understand, you know, what was the pool that applied? What was the pool that got accepted? And then what was the pool that enrolled? Those three sets of numbers are typically available. So I'd like to see.
What about the applicant class for this upcoming freshman class?
I think just for the class of 20, I think they gave, didn't they give us 2019? The recently enrolled freshmen. For the class, the, sorry, the 2019 admissions class.
Thank you. It would be 2019 admissions class. Pool applied, pool accepted, pool enrolled, applicant demographics.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, does that do it for everybody? I still see a lot of raised hands, but I'm praying we're done with next steps.
Ms. Cohen?
Yes, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
I have one that I had mentioned earlier, but it didn't get on here, which is that we have to build into this a process for review and analysis of the impact of these changes, of any changes made. So that if we have to adjust, we can.
Regular review and analysis, like yearly, or what are we looking at? Or does it need to work on?
We can either say regular or periodic review and analysis, but I do think review, analysis, and adjustment. We should be doing this on any policy, any work that we do, anyway.
And I'm hopeful that anything we flag for staff is hoping that we would get this information by the eighth. My assumption is that you all have it and don't need it added, like finding out the information from the applicants who are finding out a better sense of why kids are not applying. I recognize that's part of the ongoing work. So I'm not going to add it as a next step, but I think it's there, since we've already got 30 of them. All right, then, I feel like if everybody could take a really quick look, I want to make sure that nobody has any issues with ones that have been added. Sorry, yes, Ms. Corbett Sanders.
No, I didn't say anything.
Oh, I apologize. Mike.
My, Lord, that was me. I just say I've scrolled to the top, and I'll give you a couple of minutes to look, and let me know whenever you scroll down to the rest.
All right.
Ms. Cohen, I could just say, this is Dr. Brabran. Obviously, we're going to do our very best. And like you, we've been at it since 10:00 AM, and most of us, frankly, much earlier today, 7:00 AM, 8:00 AM meetings. We're going to do our best to address all of these items. We have a very short timeframe. We will do our very, very best. But like you all, too, we have been doing 24/7 days, weekends, holidays, and we're going to do our very best to get you as much of this information as we can. There's two people in Jeremy's office, but we will do our very best.
All right, crew, just want to check in one more time. If everybody just is doing a quick read, Rocha, and I think you can probably scroll to the next set. And the goal here is if something does not feel like the sense of the board, we can call it out, or if anything's an overlap and we could joyfully combine them, that would be great. If not, I think it'd be great if we can send everybody home. All right, I don't see any hands other than Ms. Ismore Heisers.
Oops, sorry, that was, I can't undo my hand right now while I'm sharing my screen. So ignore me.
Forgive me, we're so grateful that you took this on to put this in here. Thank you very, very much for doing that. I know Carl was this way as well. So appreciate both of you very much trying to do this, and appreciate everybody's patience with working in this format. So thank you very much. Really appreciate everybody's time and good work today. And I hope that someone has been kind enough to cook supper for you. And very thankful to my colleague, Mr. Frisch, for the earlier half of today. I'm looking forward to seeing many of you again later this week.
Thank you, Laura Jane.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night.
Bye.
Good night.
Night, thank you.